Welcome to the fifth hearing of the Public Accountability and Works Committee's Inquiry into the New South Wales Government's Use and Management of Consulting Services. I acknowledge the Gadigal people of the Eora Nation, the traditional custodians on the lands on which we're meeting today. I pay my respects to elders past and present and celebrate the diversity of Aboriginal peoples and their ongoing cultures and connections to the lands and waters of New South Wales. I also acknowledge and pay my respects to any Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people joining us today. Today, we will hear from academics and researchers, as well as representatives from New South Wales Treasury and the New South Wales Procurement Board and the New South Wales Branch of the Australian Paramedics Association. Before we commence, I'd like to make some brief comments about the procedures for today's hearing. Today's hearing is being broadcast live by the Parliament's website. The transcript of today's hearing will be placed on the committee's website when it becomes available. In accordance with the broadcasting guidelines, the House has authorised the filming, broadcasting and photography of committee proceedings by representatives of media organisations from any position in the room and by any member of the public from any position in the audience. Any person filming or photographing proceedings must take responsibility for the proper use of that material. This is detailed in the broadcasting resolution, a copy of which is available from the Secretariat. While parliamentary privilege applies to witnesses giving evidence today, it does not apply to what witnesses say outside of their evidence at the hearing. I therefore urge witnesses to be careful about comments you may make to the media or to others after you complete your evidence. Committee hearings are not intended to provide a forum for people to make adverse reflections about others under the protection of parliamentary privilege. In that regard, it is important that witnesses focus on the issues raised by the inquiry terms of reference and avoid naming individuals unnecessarily. All witnesses have a right to procedural fairness according to the procedural fairness resolution adopted by the House in 2018. If witnesses are unable to answer a question today and want more time to respond, they can take a question on notice. Written answers to questions taken on notice are to be provided within 21 days. If witnesses wish to hand up documents, they should do so through the committee staff. In terms of the audibility of the hearing today, I remind both committee members and witnesses to speak into the microphone. Finally, could everyone please turn their mobile phones to silence for the duration of the hearing? I now welcome our first witness, Dr Catherine Williams of the Centre for Public Integrity, who is appearing via video conference. Could you please, Dr Williams, state your name and position title and then swear either an oath or an affirmation?
So Catherine Williams, Research Director at the Centre for Public Integrity, and I would like to swear an affirmation.
Please go ahead.
Look, I'm sorry, this is not a procedure that I'm used to and I've done parliamentary hearings before. I've not been required to do one, so I apologise for that.
Hang on, let me read the affirmation out to you if you want to read it back after me.
Great, thank you.
I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare...
I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare...
And affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me...
And affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me...
Shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Would you like to begin by making an opening statement?
Thank you. So I'd like to thank the committee for the invitation to appear before you today. The Centre for Public Integrity began to look at issues relating to the use of consulting services late last year. Initially, what we were interested in was the flow of donations between the big four accounting firms and the major parties and any correlation that might exist between those donations and contract value. What we discovered then led us to focus next on a category of contracts that's called management advisory services. And we have since done some new analysis that will be released later this week. I'd hoped it would be ready to discuss with you today, but it's not released yet. I'll certainly ensure it's provided to the Secretariat in case that's of interest to the committee. What we're finding in our research has led to us being deeply troubled by the lack of sufficient transparency in respect of what is being purchased with public money from consulting firms, as well as by the hollowing out of the public service and the potential for conflicts of interest that is inherent to the operating model of some of these firms. We're working on developing a comprehensive package of reforms to respond to these issues. And if that would be of interest to the committee, I'd certainly be very happy to stay in touch with you as we develop it further.
Absolutely. I will start by asking a couple of questions before I throw over to my colleagues. You mentioned the conflict of interest. And there's a few different types of conflicts of interest, obviously, in this area. The one that we've heard a lot about with the PWC scandal has been in relation to the conflict of interest between work done for government and work done for other clients. We've also had some public commentary around the potential conflict of interest for, you know, audit work versus other types of work. And then thirdly, there's this conflict of interest that I'll get to perhaps as a second question in relation to board members who also, you know, people who are working at these consulting firms and then also working as board members on government or other companies. In relation to this audit work, yeah, let's start there. Let's start with the audit stuff. So is there ever a situation where you can have a firm working as the lead auditor for a company and also working on public policy for a government in a way that would sort of impact on that major client, I guess, in an ethical way? Can that ever be done? Are these, you know, so whatever they're called these days, integrity walls, whatever, can they ever actually work?
Look, the simple answer to that is no. As you say, there are kind of many and varied conflicts of interest associated with this operating model. And that is, it's a key one. And it's not resolvable by the implementation of integrity walls. Because the difficulty is that even if we assume that the walls function effectively to prevent the information flowing into areas of firms where it shouldn't, the difficulty is that you can't control the perception of that conflict of interest continuing to exist regardless. And I think of it as, I suppose I think of it as a bit analogous to the principle of apprehended bias that we talk about in relation to judges. And the principle, it's so important that the integrity of the judicial system is maintained that if there's a circumstance that could result in what's referred to as a fair-minded lay observer reasonably apprehending that, I mean, we're talking about this instance, that the judge might not bring an impartial mind. Or if we take it over to the situation of consulting firms in the scenario that you've described, you know, that they don't have a conflict of interest. The difficulty is that that reason, that fair-minded lay observer still well might reasonably apprehend that a conflict exists. And that has this deleterious impact upon public trust, which then has a flow-on effect for democracy. So that's the key problem here, that even if the walls function as they are supposed to, they cannot prevent there being a perception of a conflict of interest that is harmful to our society.
I think you've put that incredibly well. So, you know, from a, and I guess if I was to go and, you know, speak to some random 10 people outside and said to them that, you know, the government had just produced a report with the help of a particular firm, say one of the big four, and that report had benefited particular, you know, parts of industry or a particular, you know, happened to to support a particular project, and that that same firm also had an audit arm who was doing work for that client that then benefited, you would think that that would, that shouldn't happen, that that doesn't pass the sniff test.
It absolutely doesn't pass the sniff test. And I'm glad that it came across in a way that made sense because I was worried that I tied that up in a very complex way there. So I'm, but I agree very much that we need to be thinking about what the average member of the community thinks about these issues when they hear about them. And if their likely perception is one that would detract from their trusted government, then we should be preventing it from happening in the first place. Because there are some conflicts of interest are able to perhaps be managed sufficiently well to mitigate their potential harmful impact. But some are so significant that they simply shouldn't happen in the first place. And this is that sort of conflict. And that is why we are supportive of the proposition that the firms auditing and consulting arms should be separated structurally.
Thank you. So then going back to that first type of conflict of interest then, if we've got a circumstance where a big consulting firm is doing work for government and they're also doing work for the clients that will either benefit or suffer detriment through government policy, to what extent can we have, I guess, assurance that that work being done for government is going to be in the public interest and in the best interest of government and not furthering the nests of the consulting firm's other clients? Can there ever be an ethical, I guess, split within the consulting firms for that type of work?
Again, I would find it very difficult to conceptualise of protections that would be sufficiently robust to allow that sort of circumstance to happen. And it concerns me and I know many of the academics working in this area that it sometimes seems to be the case that the big consulting firms are perceived of as the font of all knowledge and expertise. When Australia is fortunate to have a very, very well-resourced, set-up, qualified, knowledgeable, you know, academia effectively, all these experts who could be harnessed to provide genuinely independent expertise, the sort of expertise that it wouldn't make sense for the public service to retain on an ongoing basis and that there's a legitimate need to outsource. And so those experts can probably, in many cases, step in in cases where these firms are conflicted in the way that you're describing. Because as I say, I so far haven't seen any system of sufficiently robust protections that would, in our minds, be satisfactory to allow that sort of conflict to exist.
So we have, in the case of the, again, PWC, Allegra coming in and them setting up this new government-only advisory service potentially. But we've been told that one of the benefits of consultants is that they bring with them this private sector expertise that they can, you know, they've got the finger on the pulse because they're also working with all of these commercial clients, that when they come to government, they can give that sort of benefit of the expertise they bring from working across society, not just with government. And yet then we have this, you know, idea that we're going to have a government services-only firm as a spin-off from PWC. At what point do we say, why don't we just use a public sector consulting group that only does government work? Like if that's, do you understand the rationale, I guess, for this PWC spin-off idea?
I don't understand the rationale for that idea. And what I suppose our response to that would be is that why is the government not doing government-only work? Why is that work not staying within the public sector? There's, there is a legitimate use for external expertise. But that legitimate use, we would say, is in circumstances where there is a demonstrated and acute need for capability that is properly not within the constant capability of the public service. So if I'm thinking of the sort of, you know, an example perhaps helps pin this down a bit. And maybe a good one is urgent legal advice that is sought in relation to a highly specialised area and area that the public service can't justify retaining expertise in all the time. That would be a legitimate case in which to have recourse to an external consultant. But otherwise, we should be focused on building up the capability of the public service, not referring work to a government-only consulting firm.
Yep.
Oh, just to follow up on that because I think this is a crucial point. And, you know, we obviously, you want to try and come to this with an objective, from an objective basis because we've all got our sort of political and ideological viewpoints, which is why we're in this place. But from a pure logical, logical point of view, you would imagine that the ideal model would be public service having as much resident expertise as possible, given the service delivery and the direct transmission mechanism from the people they're serving via their parliaments and their politicians and the public service to the service delivery. Now, there will be a bespoke marginal service which they will not have capacity in, which is where presumably you bring in consultants and contractors. But what appears to have happened over the last 20 to 30 years is that model has been kind of flipped. So that almost the default provision is to consult and outsource. And then that has a deleterious effect on the public sector because it wears down their capacity. So then it becomes a self-reinforcing principle because the public sector is no longer capable of doing it. These big consulting firms can do it because, guess what, they've had 25 years to build up the expertise. It's like, is that the position of the Centre for Public Integrity in a nutshell?
You have characterised it perfectly, yes.
And what's your suggested way forward in terms of re-alining that to the point where the public can feel confident that they're actually getting value for money and the public service is accountable and consultants are accountable?
Look, it's such a good question and in a sense I can make some comment about it now and I might come back to you as we develop our reform package if that's okay.
That would be helpful, yes.
There are so many, so many elements to it. I guess I might take the easiest element first, if that's okay. And that is how the public can be assured that it's getting value for money. One of the things that really concerns us is the lack of meaningful information about what is being purchased when services are procured. And I have to say, I'm not as familiar with the New South Wales disclosure system. So please correct me if I'm wrong in assuming that it's quite similar to the level of detail disclosed on AusTender in respect of Commonwealth procurements. But what we're seeing in our research is that the, when a contract is disclosed, if that is to be a useful exercise, there needs to be enough detail disclosed so that people can actually figure out what's being purchased and scrutinise the purchase to see if there's value for money. But if I give you one example, in the contract of, in the category of management advisory service contracts, we see those services being purchased described as things like support services and programme and product management service and support. Now, I don't know what that means. I've got no idea what that means. And I think that probably the average member of the public would have no idea what that means. But it's public money that's buying those services. So why should the public not know what that means? And perhaps just a practical solution in terms of facilitating the level of disclosure required for people to have confidence that they're getting value for money is that when a contract is disclosed, the scope of work, for example, could be uploaded with that disclosure so that people can see precisely what's being bought. And at the end of the project, at the delivery, if it's an advice-based project, then why can the delivery outcome not also be uploaded to the same repository? Of course, there might be a need for sections of it to be redacted. We would accept that. But otherwise, the information, the default position should be that more information is disclosed so that it is able to be scrutinised, so that people are able to have trust that they are getting value for money when services are procured by government. But that's sort of the easy element of it. Then the much more complex element of what you spoke about is how we now rebuild a public service that has been systematically hollowed out. And one thing I think that can be really beneficial is high-quality in-house training programmes for public servants. And also perhaps, I mean, this is something that I think Mike Keating, former secretary of various federal departments, including PMC, has spoken about is a need to rebuild capacity of the public service to do research and evaluation in particular. Those skills are vitally important. And when we're, where that evaluation work is being done, it appears it's often being outsourced, which has two problems. And the first of those problems is that the firm being contracted to do that work is probably more likely to say what the government wants to hear because it wants to get more work. It's difficult to say something to someone buying something from you that you know that they don't want to hear. And the other problem is that it's meant that there's not that critical skill within the public service to do that work. So I would say when we're trying to rebuild, we have to focus on the areas that are really critical and that have been effectively decimated by the approach that's been taken to the use of consultants over a long period. But it's only, look, it's only half an answer and I will come back to you as we develop more precise reforms around that.
Do you think, I might just ask one more before I defer to my colleague. Do you think prior to the PWC, which is, you know, incident, which in a lot of these situations, we seem to rely on an investigative media to expose, as well as some of these committees in both the Senate and the state level. But I mean, do you think that, I mean, in a lot of ways, we shouldn't have to have a reactive system? We should have a proactive system that's structurally sound so that this is the exception rather than the rule. Do you think there's, what sort of level of awareness do you think the public would have of government expenditure on consultants prior to the price Waterhouse coup? Is it the sort of thing that just goes under the radar or do you think the public are aware and are not happy? What's your organisation's view on that, if you have one?
Hmm. It's not something we specifically considered, but I suppose looking at the flow of media coverage in relation to this issue, the public is unlikely to have awareness of how money is spent in this area without a scandal leading to media coverage as a consequence. I think, you know, unfortunately, it doesn't get the regular scrutiny that is required. And other things that we are thinking about is the role that, the, you know, more kind of periodic role that an order to general's office could play in respect of monitoring compliance with rules. Of course, then those agencies need to be resourced more if they're going to be doing more work. And also ways to enable parliaments to scrutinise this sort of spending on a more periodic basis. What sort of information would be really valuable to give to parliaments from departments? And on what kind of basis for parliaments to be able to do their scrutiny functions? Because I agree with you entirely, the work of parliamentary inquiries in this area has been has been vitally important and unearthed a whole lot of information that needed to come to light. So we're keen to ensure that parliament continues to get access to the information it needs to do scrutiny properly.
And can I ask just one quick one to follow up on that? Are there any sort of exemplar jurisdictions that are doing this better than anyone else that you're aware of?
Not that we are aware of at this point, but we're still undertaking our comparative analysis of jurisdictions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I had a question that follows on from your consideration there of scrutiny. Given that currently, you know, it seems to be a self-regulated space where there are some professional bodies that almost cover consultants, but there seems to be a bit of a gap. I wondered if you could talk a bit about the role, if any, of self-regulation in this space? And if not, and you did allude to scrutiny in your previous answer, if not, almost all of our witnesses, regardless of their views, have noted that there will always be some kind of consulting probably needed for those niche areas of expertise. So the idea of scrutiny or regulation of the behaviour of consultants is going to extend well beyond, you know, a rebuilding of the public sector. So if you could just perhaps comment on that regulatory space.
Hmm. So our view of self-regulation in this area is that it has, it has not worked, it does not work. You need independent regulation. Self-regulation is never going to be sufficient. So we're interested and we're currently looking at what sort of mechanisms could be used to ensure that consultants are able to be effectively held accountable. Not that they're held accountable at the whim of their employers who, you know, often have an incentive to minimise perceptions of employee wrongdoing. So we're working at the moment on developing what appropriate mechanisms might be.
So that's one of the recommendations that might come out of your...
Thanks for looking at it.
Fabulous. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Coming back to the other sort of main type of conflict of interest that we've been exploring in this inquiry, a lot of which came out of looking into the use of consultants in the local health district boards, or sorry, in the local health districts, and also looking at their boards. We've seen, and I note one of your recommendations in the federal sphere has been to prevent former partners of the big four who are receiving annuities from holding public sector roles. Across the New South Wales agencies, we have a huge number of boards that have ex-consultants on them and even in some places, current consultants sitting on them from the big four. In most of those cases, and when we've had these discussions with the relevant boards and with health, we, you know, what we're being told is that as long as you disclose that you were employed or are employed by that consulting firm, then you, you know, your conflict of interest is sort of, you're done. Can you explain to us why you think that we need to prevent government boards, I guess, from having consultants on them or ex-consultants on them?
Hmm. So again, there, to my mind, the problems are two. The potential for a real conflict of interest and then the potential for it to be perceived that there is a conflict of interest. So it might, I mean theoretically, I'm not sure of the sorts of processes that are in place in New South Wales and what's deemed acceptable as a tolerable conflict of interest. But I would hope it's not possible that somebody is able to be appointed to a board that might be making recommendations relevant to clients of that person's firm. I would hope that that's not possible, but I'm not sure. And the other issue is that even if, if it is possible, so even if people aren't appointed to a board doing work that might potentially benefit their firm's clients, the holding of a public board position obviously leads to the ability to build up networks of influence and knowledge that might be beneficial to a firm's operations regardless. And so I think it's important to be very, very careful about those sorts of appointments. And one thing that I think, you know, in respect of public appointments broadly is that there is, I think it's important that there's a very robust process in place for the making of those appointments because the, you know, the risk of those appointments being perceived as jobs for mates is a real one. And we have done a lot of work around the sorts of processes that need to be in place. Like one thing I know, I think is the case in New South Wales is that there's a guideline or standard in respect of making appointments to public boards. From the brief look I had, it didn't seem to me that that was legislated. But we would be talking about there needing to be in place a legislated process in respect of making those appointments. Requirements around transparency so that they are advertised, that there is an independent panel Requirements around transparency so that they are advertised that there is an independent panel undertaking the assessment process and that the minister, relevant ministers then able to appoint from a pool of shortlisted candidates, not whomever they wish to appoint. And those measures also would go some way, I believe, to helping to, um, ameliorate the damage that could be caused by people who are employees of these firms holding the positions on public boards. But as I say, to me, that's, that's really a red line is if the board is doing work, making recommendations where the firm has clients that could benefit or the firm is seeking to expand its operations. You have to be very, very careful about tolerating that arrangement, I think.
One of the, um, the sort of revelations, um, from this inquiry so far and now questioning of P W C and the information they returned to us, um, on notice, um, we, you know, we, we sort of questioned them about they've got a, a program, I think it's called the onboard program, they've got six hundred and sixty-six, I think it was, partners or, or employees of P W C on government boards across Australia, sorry, government or not-for-profit boards across Australia. Um, but they also participate, um, we've, uh, we've been told now in something I think called the Observership Program, which is a program where they are putting, um, P W C employees and partners on as observers on boards, um, rather than board members and, um, uh, in a kind of mentoring relationship. Uh, and then we've also, um, subsequent to that, uh, also found out that they have, um, been, uh, benevolently or in some cases being paid, uh, to give mentoring, um, advice to um, CEOs or CFOs, um, of particular government, um, agencies. So there's a, there's a, a real, um, what looks to be a business model, uh, of getting P W C people onto boards. Um, uh, and when we asked the, the acting CEO about that, we were told it was basically a, you know, sort of a benevolent thing where people want to give back to the community. Um, what do you make of, of that? And is there a case for saying that even if there's not a direct conflict of interest um, between a person's firm and the work they're doing on a board, that they are, if nothing else, kind of, um, uh, promoting the benefits of, of consulting, uh, and outsourcing, um, to those boards?
Right, look, I, I suppose, uh, my response to that is that, um, if we assume that firms engaging in that sort of behaviour are rational entities, they're doing that in order to further their own interests. And if the desire is gen- genuinely to give back to the community, I, I mean, I'm gonna say something that will sound a little bit silly now, but as a teenager I worked for The Body Shop and The Body Shop had a program that, uh, wanted to give back to the community and so they paid their employees, all of their employees, to volunteer at grassroots projects that were, um, that, that, you know, of the store, each local store's choosing. And so at my store, we did dog walking for people with disabilities who weren't able to walk their dogs. Now, there, there's plenty of genuine need in the community, where if a corporation wishes to give back, it can give back in a way that does not appear designed to reinforce its ability to, to make profit. And so I'd suggest that those firms could look at those alternative methods, given that a method of the kind that you've described is difficult to see as anything other than a firm's effort to build its network, entrench its business model, et cetera.
Incredibly well said, thank you. I'll just check if my, um, Labour colleagues have more questions before.
How are we going for time, Chair?
Uh, we've got another fifteen.
Okay.
Anything, it's time?
I don't have any.
No? Um, I'll come back to you before we end. Um, if I could just ask, one of the other things that we've, um, been looking at is the possibility of, uh, you know, in post-engagement separations or you know, we've been looking at this revolving door, um, are there other jurisdictions that impose a a limit on, you know, the, the places that public servants can go to once they've worked in high levels within government? Um, to stop them going straight on to, uh, a board of a, sorry, not a board, uh, straight into employment with one of the big consulting firms?
Uh, to my knowledge at the moment, no. So mostly what we're seeing is that these post-employment separation periods apply to working specifically for lobbying firms. Uh, and where those prohibitions exist, I mean, in some jurisdictions, there are really substantial prohibitions, like Canada has a five-year prohibition, which I think is a really interesting, uh, approach. That I would mention too, that they do something I, I think is valuable if you were to ever look at a longer, uh, post-employment separation period than currently exists in New South Wales in respect of lobbying or broadening it to, um, these sorts of firms too. The Integrity Commission can have a role in relation to, uh, determining whether there should be an exemption in an individual case from that five-year prohibition, which I think is appropriate, given you're talking about such a substantial period of time when you get into that upper range of, of limits. But in respect of consulting firms, we've not seen anything so far. Uh, I think one thing that it's, you know, we're trying to be cognizant of is that even though those firms are not specifically lobbying firms at times, they might be engaging in lobbying in the sense of trying to win work. And also we're kind of conceptualising, conceptualising it from the position that the point of there being a prohibition, a cooling off period in respect of lobbying work is to allow the dilution of networks and the value of knowledge obtained during a person's period in, um, a government, a, a public position to, to allow for that to dilute over time. Now, as we see it at the moment, this is probably an analogous circumstance. You don't want people who have with the benefit of their public role, funded by the taxpayer, able to build up networks and knowledge over a period, be able to straight away move to an organisation that knows the value, the value of that no- network and knows the value of that knowledge. And that's why it's prepared to be able to, it's prepared to pay top dollar for it. Um, being able to benefit in a way that is, is not fair. So we're at the moment approaching it from that perspective and I think that will ultimately drive our recommendation in, in this area.
Um, just a final area of questioning from me. Um, when we're looking at, and we've got the, um, we've got Treasury coming back in this afternoon to answer some more questions, um, and also the procurement board, um, we've spent some time asking about post-engagement reviews with consultants. Uh, and we asked for a bunch of data, for example, to come back to us from, um, health where they've listed out their consultant um, use each of the contracts, which has been incredibly useful. Uh, and then also commented on whether or not there has been, you know, some sort of a review of, of how good that work was. Um, and in the vast majority of cases, they've just said, um, the work was done, so we paid. Uh, and that's sort of the post-engagement, uh, review that was done. Um, is there in any other jurisdictions you've seen ever a, a case of looking back, so say, say for example that a consultant has helped do a business case, uh, and they've predicted that, you know, the, the, the benefits will be X, Y and Z going five years into the future. Do any jurisdictions ever go back and look and say, well, actually, no, you got that completely wrong or yes, that was quite good? Uh, are there any proper kind of, you know, real substantive reviews of consultants' work done anywhere?
Not that we have seen. We've seen no example of that so far. And I mean, the sad reality might be at the moment that that's the sort of review that would be outsourced instead of being done. But, I mean, it's, it's absurd, but it's, it's well possible at the moment. And that comes back to that sort of evaluative capacity that needs to be rebuilt within the public service. And then in that case, once that's rebuilt, they absolutely should be undertaking those sorts of reviews. So that over time, you get a sense of areas in which certain firms are able to deliver, are not able to deliver, should not be contracted again as a provider of a particular service. It's, it's, it's critically important that where public money is being used to purchase a service, there is some review of whether what was supposed to be provided was be, was provided and the ultimate value of that.
And we're seeing, of course, at the federal level with the defence contracts, with the, um, you know, the allegations, um, last night that were raised on the Four Corners program, um, you know, that some work was, was given to um, consultants that then ended up, you know, potentially not having been done. Um, do you think that is primarily because we lack as, you know, d- does the public sector now lack the expertise to review or is it more a case of you know, that, that there's no disclosure, there's no transparency and there's no consequences for when people do the wrong thing in relation to consultants?
It's hard to determine the extent to which each of those factors is, is driving the, the current situation. It's likely a combination of all of those things, I think.
Um, thank you. Just finally, sorry, one more thing, cause I just, I could talk about this for hours. Um, in relation to, one of the other things we found is, um, this kind of phenomenon of secondments where people from consulting firms are brought in and they're sitting within government departments, um, often what looks to be quite long-term contracts as well, where they're, they're effectively looking like they're employees. Um, and we've also discovered that there is a, a discount given, um, from the big four to government for contracts where they will allow a second D, um, to sit in the department. Um, what do you think about that in terms of the sort of ethical challenges that that, that raises?
It raises substantial ethical difficulties because, I mean, presumably if the, if a firm is prepared to charge less where they're allowed to put a second D in place, there's a reason for that. They see some benefit potentially able to be gained. And if you've got a second D from an external firm embedded within the public service, again, investing time, building up networks, building up knowledge. If ultimately the objective of that is to take more work out of the public service and direct it to the firm, which it likely is, given that that's the firm's operating model, then I can't really see how, how it should be permitted.
Thank you. I'll just check with my colleagues if there's any other questions before we let you go. Just checking with Miss Taylor on, sorry, Mrs. Taylor online. Nope, I think we're, I think we're, we're good. Thank you so much um, for taking the time to come and share your expertise with us today. And thank you for all the work that your organisation does. Um, to the extent there are supplementary questions or questions taken on notice, there'll be twenty-one days to respond and the committee secretary will be in touch. Um, but that concludes, um, our session with you today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much for having me.
Thanks.
We'll just be back in a few minutes. Do you want me to go first on this one?
I don't mind, Abigail, whatever you feel like.
Otherwise, I'm just talking.
It's okay. Feel free to lead off.
Sure.
Are we just freewheeling?
Yeah.
Sure. We won't, we would claim to. Um, the two CPA, uh, straight, um, staff there, that's, that the two CPA members, so I was in here, we, we communicated this. In that complaint, in that complaint. We won't go to mention those people.
Are we okay to restart?
Yep. We're good?
Yep.
Excellent, welcome back. Um, I now welcome our next witnesses from New South Wales. Sorry, no, start that again. I now welcome our next witnesses, Dr Betty Con Walker uh, and Emeritus Professor Bob Walker. Could you please state your name and position title and then swear either the oath or the affirmation?
Uh, Dr Betty Con Walker and, um, I take the oath. Um, I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. So help me God.
Thank you.
And I'm, um, Bob Walker. Um, I'm an Emeritus of the Profession of Accounting in the School of Business at the University of Sydney. Um, I've, uh, taken the affirmation. I, I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you very much. Could I ask you both to just bring your microphones ever so slightly closer? Just, it could be a bit hard to hear. Um, did you have an opening statement you'd like to make?
We do have a short statement. Uh, as we've said in our submission, the public sector has always outsourced some functions. Uh, the use of outsourcing, of which consultancies are a subset, increased on the basis of two beliefs. First, that it would lead to a smaller public sector and to savings of twenty percent based on ill-considered interpretations of some questionable UK academic work. Not that we're advocating a smaller public sector and banning the use of consultants. Rather, we are advocating a more efficient and skilled public service with consultants only to be used as a last resort, not a first resort. Our initial submission provided more data, data to, uh, that reported by the auditor general. Uh, for example, it covers expenditure for a longer period of consult, on consultants as well as, uh, information on contractors. Um, it should be noted that some of these outlays may not have been recorded as expenses but treated as part of the cost of new assets. Our supplementary submission, which we've drafted after. Our supplementary submission, which we've drafted after following some questions asked by the committee, um, presents additional data about expenditure on consultants, however described, um, relative to trends in public sector employment. There is little information, as I think the committee has found, available to determine whether savings have actually been achieved. Uh, we do know that public sector employment has not fallen. It is a third larger today than it was in nineteen, in nineteen ninety-nine. On the face of it, outsourcing to consultants and contractors has not produced material, let alone major savings.
I'll take it up from here. We go on to refer to the Public Service Commission's collection of data, which may be able to show any skills gap. If that reporting is improved, this information could be used to implement our recommendation to engage public servants with relevant skills to form a New South Wales public sector consultancy. Our supplementary information responds to suggestions that there are robust systems in place to deal with complaints about members of the accounting profession. We present a case study, a little old, but how of how a complaint to CPA Australia was handled. This concerned the dissemination in two thousand and thirteen of a widely publicised report about government finances two days before a federal election. That report was intended to influence the public at large. This committee may wish to suggest that a disciplinary committee established by the accounting bodies should be more proactive in addressing matters affecting the public interest, particularly when dealing with government finances. I'll open to questions.
Thank you very much. Um, and thank you very much for your work in this area and your detailed submissions. Um, there's a lot to cover. I just wanted to start, though, on the the point that you raise at the end there about what appears to be a lack of, um, of consequences, really, for, um, people in the industry doing the wrong thing. And we've heard, um, from, uh, from Cairns in our last hearing uh, about how they had begun or commenced an inquiry into, uh, the behaviour of KPMG in relation to the Tahiti scandal. Um, we heard about, uh, the sort of lack of enforcement around, um, the the ethics cheating, the ethics test cheating, the PWC scandal. Um, to what extent, I guess, what would what would a a regulator who that was actually doing its job and was fit for purpose be doing at this point? What does what does the ideal regulator look like to you?
Well, it's not what we've got at the moment, which is, um, simply is involved. Regulatory activities are devolved to a committee of CEOs of agencies, in in essence, which I think is just a bit silly.
Accountancy firms.
Accountancy firms, yes. Um, CEOs of accountancy. Oh, yes. The second thing is, I think it should note that the submission from the Institute of Chartered Accountants, of which I'm a member, I'm a third-generation chartered accountant, believe it or not, such a thing could happen. They suggest that their procedures prioritise matters which may harm or damage consumers, for which I mean, they possibly mean shareholders and creditors. They don't seem to place much emphasis on the public interest. And I just found it particularly outrageous in this case study we report, that it was headlines in major media, and nothing was done about it. Uh, and plainly, as we show in the submission, the activities of a certain group of people, one of whom was an accountant, um, didn't comply with the profession's profession standards. I think the other two members were economists, and I have to say that regardless of my wife's interest in this matter, economists don't have codes of ethics. Turning to then, your question was, how how would such a, um, public sector consultancy operate, or is it, or how?
No, my question was how would a, sort of the ideal regulator for these consulting firms? What would that look like, if it's not what we've got now?
Well, I think you have to have a combination of monitoring and then the application, identification of deficiencies and breaches of standards. And, uh, and then, uh, some form of enforcement. And I note that, um, the professions regulatory bodies say they don't do any enforcement, and that, but they're also saying they're unaware of any major deficiencies. So I wonder if you don't do any monitoring, how do you, how do you know what what's efficient? So there should be some proactive process of, uh, watching what's going on and then, uh, taking action in a timely way, not eighteen months later, as happened in this case study.
They rely on people bringing forward complaints, basically. That's that's been our experience, uh, with that example. And it sounds like that they're still relying on people bringing forward complaints. Rather, they're taking, um, a proactive role of identifying issues. So they're obviously, in their current state, they're not the bodies to monitor consultants, um, in the broader sense that you're talking about. Um, they, there would have to be significant changes for that to happen to, for them to be an effective, uh, oversider, a monitor, mon- a monitor and oversider of, uh, any wrongdoing.
Um, perhaps we can look then at the, um, public sector. So the analysis you've done about the public sector numbers versus use of consultants. Um, and I take your point that, you know, certainly the public sector has not, um, I don't want to use the word benefited, because I don't think it'd be a benefit for them to have, um, reduced their headcount. But there hasn't, from your analysis, been a reduction in headcount versus the increase in the use of consultants. Um, in your numbers, though, are you looking just at government agencies that otherwise would be using consultants? Or are you looking at the whole of the public sector, so including teachers and nurses and midwives, et cetera?
The numbers are for the total public sector. In, um, particularly in the table in the sup- I I I'm not sure if, uh, the supplementary.
We've just published it.
Okay. Um, well, in that table, um, we've gone back as far as we could using the New South Wales reports on state finances, which is where we obtained the, um, information on consultants. Um, and they didn't publish a line item on contractors until two thousand and eleven. Um, our first submission, uh, started the, um, the analysis at two thousand and eleven simply because that was the first year that there were separate line items for consultants and contractors. Um, what we've done now, and and that found incredible numbers, um, two point seven billion dollars spent in that period on consultants and some twenty-one billion dollars spent on, uh, contractors. Um, so, um, what we've done now is we've gone back to, um, as far as we could in terms of, uh, consultants. Uh, and that is, again, on the New South Wales reports on state finances. So we've gone back to two thousand and one and taken that into account. Um, we found that, uh, the number since two thousand and one, uh, is now up to three point seven billion. So in that ten years before, um, two thousand and eleven, one billion dollars roughly, one point one billion dollars were spent on consultants. Um, so that, adding that to the the twelve years since, we now have a total in New South Wales spend of two, uh, three point seven billion dollars on consultants alone. Uh, and then if you look at the, uh, contractors' figures, as I said, uh, we don't have any line items for those before two thousand and eleven. I'm sure they were, uh, they're hidden somewhere in sort of some other line item. Um, but in that, uh, period, the, uh, total spend on, uh, contractors, uh, was, uh, I think it's, uh, I've got that two point, uh, twenty-one point two billion dollars just in those, uh, twelve years. Um, you can add to that. Um, one of the issues we found.
Sorry, can I, sorry, uh, Dr, Dr Walker, so that, the requirement for the line item of contractors, was that like a decree from the bureaucracy, or was it just, did it just start appearing into the?
I didn't find any point where someone decided that, uh, there was a decision to do that. But it just appeared, I started going through the, um, the reports, and the first time I saw this delineation was in two thousand and eleven, in the two thousand and eleven, um, report, so I'm not sure why.
Possible that there may be extra expenditure on contractors?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely. And it may be in another, like, you know, other, or who knows? Where where it's, uh, is hiding, but it's certainly a bigger figure than, um, that's why we say there's at least twenty-one billion dollars spent on contractors in over those, that that period.
And as mentioned in the, our opening statement, um, under accounting practice, you can capitalise, in other words, add to the value of an asset, expenditure on certain work that is intended to is classified through some ambiguous way of attributable to that that asset. So contractors' expenditure could be much greater than what's reported as a line item in the operating statement. A better solution would be to, for, uh, and I'm not sure we put this in a recommendation, but a better solution would be for any notes to the accounts that refer to expenditure on contractors indicate what's been expensed and what has been capitalised. Likewise, with consultants, what's been expensed and what's been capitalised.
And and the problem we have with the, this differentiation between contractors and consultants and other and other definitions is that even the accounts themselves have had on several ye- over several years had to redefine expenditure, uh, in their own accounts. Um, so in subsequent, in a subsequent year, or years in in a couple of cases. So that tells us that people who are compiling data, uh, are not quite sure about the definitions, um, themselves. So, um, there are, there is a lot of grey area here. And whilst we present these figures, they're the best we've been, we've seen in the published data. I'm sure there there may be better data, uh, unpublished, if someone looked and, um, tried to differentiate how they came to, um, define one lot of expenditures consultants and another as contractors.
And and to date, that sort of, um, ambiguity around accounting, um, standards in the, in the, is still remains today?
Absolutely. I'm, uh, you know, there's no, there's no reason to believe that, um, everyone in the public sector, uh, who's compiling data is sure of the definitions. Um, there are definitions, there are guidelines, you can have as many definitions as you like. But unless those things are monitored in some way and checked, um, once they're put together, uh, you can't be sure whether they're the real figures or not. Um, and we know from your hearings that, um, there's very little monitoring um, of, uh, performance, let alone, uh, putting together information.
To clarify, recent changes to accounting standards, and I can't recall what year, but in the last decade, um, introduced a rule that you, if, uh, errors were identified in the classification or reporting of dollar amounts, for that matter, they could be, they could be corrected retrospectively. So anyone trying to track trends shouldn't rely just on the reports of that year, but have to look at what retrospective changes were made.
So there's no official, um, there's no kind of official template document from Treasury or Finance or whatever that says, this is how we want you to account for everything. This is a standard practice and all departments will employ this approach so that when we pull it all up, we've got an accurate picture of what did we spend on consultants? What did we spend on contractors? You know, all that sort of thing. There's a, it's just kind of whatever the devolved departments think.
Two comments. Uh, first, disclosing it about spending on consultants and contractors serves two purposes. It's an instrument of accountability, so that you can identify how the agency is spending its money. And then, secondly, to, information to enable people to assess financial condition and operating performance. Somewhat distinct, that's why I suggest that the notes should distinguish those things. Uh, coming back to standardisation, when I served as chairman of the Council on the Cost of Government, which was a role to look at state finances generally and which involved some deal of conflict with central agencies who didn't like people correcting anything or questioning what they'd said.
When was this, doctor?
Uh, some, I can't remember my CV on this one.
It was, uh. It started, yeah, it's on the first, first submission.
Oh, nineteen ninety-five to nineteen ninety-nine. It's a footnote on page eight. Um, we had a bit of trouble getting going because the agencies at the time had a premier's department allocated, people who just weren't qualified to do the sort of work we wanted. In fact, I spoke to one person in a central agency, he said, let me tell you who they allocated. And he went through a list. There were fifteen people allocated to us and he identified thirteen as non-performers that were handed to us to look after. So I had to then recruit some people from outside myself.
So this was an attempt, because you're, you you're a bit modest about it. But this was, this was the council set up, uh, in order to do a little bit of what you're trying to do, which is oversee what was really happening. Um, and it was separate from the central agencies. It reported to the Premier and to Parliament. So it had an ability to look into not only agencies, but also the central agencies. And, um, naturally, they, uh, were not happy about that. Um, so they weren't, uh, very facilitative in 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 the resources that were provided for that, uh, council to do its job.
Well, in fact, three central agencies were represented on our council.
Yeah.
And there were three or four others. Um, just turning to your question about if there are standard templates for reporting. Um, there are some guidelines, I suppose, on reporting, but one of the difficulties is that it's up to the agencies to decide what revenues, what expenses, how they categorise expenses and so forth. And hence, one of our projects, when we saw changes made from year to year by agencies, one of our projects was to, um, recommend to, that the central agencies develop a minimum stand, or Treasury in particular, develop a minimum standard chart of accounts. That's an index of the way you record things, assets and liabilities, revenues and expenses. And, uh, we were told that Treasury didn't need to do that, they'd already done their own project. And we asked to see it, and one of my private sector colleagues had been the chief financial officer of, uh, one of the top hundred companies, um, demolished it in five minutes of conversation. He'd read it and pointed out the inconsistency in definitions and so forth. So Treasury withdrew that, and I think they wrote off the expenditure on that, which was some millions of dollars.
Yeah, I think it's in your submission.
Yeah, right. Um, so the idea of a minimum standard chart of accounts was actively resisted by Treasury, who preferred to, uh, develop a system that helped them to report to the Australian Bureau of Statistics, which I didn't think was quite the priority at the time. Now, there may have been changes since then, I haven't tracked those, but, uh, I I don't think there has been. It's now up to agencies to decide.
Even if you have a template, um, there's still a lot of judgment involved. And the only way that you can ensure that, uh, the judgement of the individuals doing this work is by monitoring and asking questions. Um, I mean, that takes time, obviously, but, um, that's the only way that you can be sure that people who are actually involved in putting these important numbers together know that what they're doing and that they're complying with the expectation of what should be included in those numbers. Um, and I'm not su- and I I couldn't, I'm not certain that that happens, um, anyway, so, um.
We now have devolution of responsibility.
Devolution, yes.
Devolution of CEOs of agencies.
One of the things that really stunned me was when, um, the Auditor General, um, who appeared before you, um, explained that, uh, she was not able to get a figure from government on how much was spent on consultants. That really floored me because, um, it was a stunning thing to, after all these years and after all the spending on, I'm sure, billions of dollars on information systems, they couldn't produce a list of, or a expenditure list, even as bad as it may be or as good as it may be. Um, that's why I started my own, um, analysis and I went directly to the report on state finances as an alternative to, um, because the the Auditor General literally had to go through three hundred and fifty annual reports, agency reports, over five years to get her figures. She, that office isn't supposed to be a collector of information. They are supposed to be a- an analysts of information, auditors of information, and hence audit offers, not collecting, uh, raw da- data. I mean, that, that was just ridiculous, in my view. And so, um, something needs to be done and and.
It's a little bit counterintuitive in this day and age, isn't it, with software packages, accounting packages, where it doesn't seem like a terribly difficult thing to standardise coding of different expenditures? coding of different expenditures so that you go down, you push the input user down certain pathways and unless it's a total stuff-up, like for example, if you're allocating a consultancy fee for the design of a project, you enter it as capital, that's obviously a mistake you can't help because it's
May not.
I, I mean, presumably so, that's got something to do with it.
With a consultant giving engineering designs or something like this,
Yeah.
Which are used, it's probably appropriately capitalised.
So, so, I mean, this goes to one of my questions to the early, are there any, any other jurisdictions who are kind, we can hold up as the gold standard to say this is what you should be doing?
I think the Commonwealth's probably got a standard form of reporting by agencies, but they, they don't involve themselves in businesses as much as just providing general government services. So that's possibly a source. Certainly the private sector members of the council at the time were very adamant that it was possible to develop a minimum standard chart of accounts and indeed we...
I mean, this is a very crucial subject, isn't it? Because unless you get an accurate snapshot of what's going on, it's hard to make objective judgements.
Well, exactly. And, um, they seem to have, uh, information in silos. So one system has some information, another system has some other information and so on. I, it's just a bizarre approach to managing, uh, the, the biggest state in Australia. It really is just a silly, silly thing to think that you can't do it.
To digress a little, I mean, one of the concerns about expenditure is also whether it's effective. And one of the things I noted as a, as a student of public sector finances was that some agencies changed their performance indicators from year to year to year, generally in order to show improvements. If they didn't show improvements, they changed over, over time. So one of the projects that, uh, we undertook in the Council on the Cost of Government was to look at how to standardise performance reporting. And to do that, we looked at international best practice, which I think was at the time was the US Governmental Accounting Standards Board, which had spent a lot of money developing standard performance indicators. And they weren't simply by agency, they were by policy areas of government. And so we produced a series of reports by, um, policy areas of government and, um, we called it service efforts and accomplishments reporting, what was being spent, what resources were allocated to a project and what was achieved. And I thought was one of our major projects, um, we published a series of our reports and I have to say they, I was surprised to see they weren't in the state government archives, but they are in the parliamentary library in the basement, if you want to look at those reports.
Well, that gives, certainly gives them greater status.
It was resisted, obviously, by the agency, liked to continue to report that they were doing well rather than actually give the facts about what they've achieved.
And what about, on a, I guess, a related topic, we've seen these examples of, um, very, very significant infrastructure projects which are understandably outsourced. I mean, government's not going to have the internal capacity to build a, a road tunnel, you know, underneath the city from point A to point B. But what's been particularly concerning in the last term of Parliament and on a number of committees is the, the cost blo- the budget blowouts. So we have a, you know, we have a budgeted spend of twelve billion, you know, doubles in, in, in what seems like a very short amount of time due to variations. Um, wha- what's your view on that in terms of using presumably consultants to scope out these sort of things as well? Um, in terms of what would have happened, say, twenty to thirty years ago, would that have, would that scoping and administering have been done internally? And if so, did we see the same sort of cost blowouts on infrastructure projects?
Well, do you want to answer that?
Well, twenty, thirty years ago, there was what was called the Public Works Department and they actually employed people with skills in this area. Um, and so they knew what they were doing and moreover, they knew that, um, if things weren't wrong, they knew that they went wrong. Um, in other words, they could manage contractors, obviously they brought in contractors
Yes.
To do the job,
Yes.
Do the work.
But the contracts were micro-managed
Exactly.
By public sector.
And, and these people have the skills and the knowledge to know, uh, how things should go and how things should be, um, how they should proceed. Um, I don't know that that's the case now. I, I, I just don't know. Um, it may be, there may be some people who, but it doesn't look like it, uh, uh, from the outside.
No, it doesn't look like it.
It doesn't look like it. So things go crazy with overblow, overblown costs.
Yes.
Could I ask, it might be a little bit off track, but it is related with regards to, I guess, comments you made about, um, the skilling and skills capacity of the public sector. So in your opening and in your submission, you talk about the public sector, the Public Service Commission, rather, sorry. Um, and it's my understanding from your research and, and work that the Public Service Commission, which is charged with workforce development capability, doesn't actually have the data by agency regarding skills, et cetera?
I, I think they ha- they would have access to it. What, what, um, we've noticed is in their publications, their emphasis is, is, is quite skewed. For instance, they produce what's called occupations and this shows the New South Wales public sector, um, by a range of occupations. And when you look at this, and I can, I can provide the committee just in case they, I have a, an extra copy, um, not copies, a couple of cop- oh, one copy. Um, and when you look at, when you look at this list, which is published, um, on their side, um, there are various occupations, schoolteachers, nurses, post, police officers. There is not a single occupation there that, um, relates to, um, skills of financial skills, accounting and financial skills. And that surprised me. So, um, we know how many cleaners and laundry workers there are, um, and, and all, about one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, that's what, twenty, twenty-odd occupations, but none of which are specialists in, have, need to have specialised financial skills. And that really is, is another stunning thing. This is the, the Pu- Public Service Commission, which is supposed to look at, um, the skill, um, the skills of the, and the capability of the public sector. Um, so I'm sure they may have, they, they have, obviously they have enough information to give us the number of people in each occupation, but we don't know how many there are with financial skills, for instance. Um, and so the question to ask this commission is, do they have the information or do they have access to it? Uh, can they put, pull together some information on, um, uh, skill shortages, um, in terms of, um, how many skilled accountants they have, how many, you know, that kind of area where most of the account, uh, accountants, uh, counting, most of the consultancies come from in the financial area. Um, but it doesn't provide it. Um, so, and then they have something called, um, the, uh, some, uh, talent pools, New South Wales Public Service Talent Pools. And they have available pools from which agencies can call on people with, um, various skills and they're graded. So there's a grade five to six talent pool, a grade nine, ten talent pool and a, a senior pool, presumably above, um, grade, a senior level one. Um, and it just is a puzzle. I mean, it's all about grades and, um, numbers, but nothing about skill gaps, which is what we're looking at. What are the skill gaps? I mean, that's the only way you're going to be able to improve the cap- capability of the public sector if we actually know what's there now and what needs to be, uh, filled. And, and taking that to the next step, we feel that the way that the public sector can get away from this reliance on, um, outside consultancies is to actually set up its own with, uh, skilled people. Um, and you can only do that if you identify where the skill gaps are. Um, and if this, this, uh, commission doesn't have that information, the question is, why not? What is it doing? I mean, just publishing an annual report on, um, just numbers? I mean, it's just without qualitative information, it's just, uh, it's just bewildering.
Thank you.
I think, um, yeah, thank you for that. I think it really highlights the, you know, when we're talking about overall numbers of people employed within the public sector, there's also sort of what they're doing when they're in there. Um, and I would definitely love to see a, some sort of comparison amongst agencies as to, as to, you know, how many people we currently have and what they are doing and, and how that then varies depending on, or, or whether there's any correlation with how much we're spending on consultants in those particular agencies as well. Have you seen anything like that? Is there any work that's been done around that that you've seen? And if not, would it be the Public Sector Commission that would ideally be tasked with doing that or?
Well, from, from what...
A cautionary note, um, when I was Chair of the Council on the Cost of Government, Bob Carr adopted a recommendation of mine that, um, in future, people, chief financial officers employed within the New South Wales Public Service should be graduates and members of either the Institute of Chartered Accountants or Australian Society of CPAs. There's a third body which is, I think, most of its membership's probably drawn from the public sector for people who do substantially clerical operations, they objected and so it was expanded to cover them as well. And that's something the accounting profession has now accepted in all their submissions. They talk about the three accounting bodies, but, um, I really believe that you need people with more than basic bookkeeping skills or you need people who...
Might be a good start, chief financial officer controlling billions of dollars. Might be a good idea to have a professional qualification.
Yeah. And that could involve people with master's degrees in special, I've done some specialist work because these days we have a flow of international students, so it's this fear that standards of undergraduate degrees across the country have somewhat declined.
That's for another inquiry.
What's the criteria now, Doctor? Is it the same as the Carr criteria currently?
Well, they, um, I think it was amended after vigorous lobbying to encompass the third body, I've forgotten their name actually. Uh, I've never read any activity and they have made submissions to this inquiry and I don't know if they've got any, talked about their monitoring or disciplinary procedures, but, uh, it's a professional association of people who perform clerical and bookkeeping roles and possibly prepare financial statements.
In answer to the Chair, um, we were, um, surprised to hear from the Treasury people who appeared before you and the New South Wales Procurement, I think was the other fellow, um, state that, uh, their job is not to monitor, um, basically, um, and that accountability is at the agency level. Um, now, that was never the intention. Um, I was in, in Treasury at the time that all this was discussed at the, right at the beginning, um, and the, there was never any intention to devolve accountability to the agencies, um, because that's where you lose sight of what's going on, especially if there's no monitoring, as admitted by, uh, the central agencies. Um, and so if you don't have monitoring, that, um, where, how can we take the next step? Uh, we don't know where the problems are, um, so, um, how can you fix them?
So, I mean, I guess, I guess the counterpoint from Treasury may be that it, it's okay to have devolved monitoring as long as you have standardised accounting and qualified people in those particular areas overseeing the expenditure. Would that work?
Well, this is monitoring by themselves, so they're monitoring themselves, their performance. Do you think they will report bad news or will they admit that they've made a mistake in hiring and paying a consultant three billion, three million dollars for a project that failed? I mean, I think that's hard to believe, especially
Yes, in that sense, yes.
Especially that, you know, when they're responsible and they're accountable and they're on short-term contracts. Um, it may have been okay in the days when public servants weren't political playthings, um, that, but, um, now they're, uh, committed to, uh, doing what their ministers want them to do and to provide advice that their ministers are expecting rather than, uh, fearless advice.
So when we, um, when we had Treasury in before and we were asking them these questions about, um, consultant spend and, and I, I got quite frustrated not, not being able to get to an answer as to exactly how much New South Wales is spending on consultants. Um, and I think I asked, well, if I, if, if you're not the person to tell me, then who is? And they was like, no, no, it's us. Um, I guess even in that devolved structure, is it Treasury then who should be ultimately responsible for ensuring, like who, when you say it wasn't intended that they would devolve accountability amongst all of the different departments and agencies, who was to retain that sort of, I guess, that ultimate oversight on public money? Is it Treasury or is it supposed to be someone else?
It, it would have been a combination, depending on how premieres is set up. So, um, when you have a premier's department that covers cabinet as well, like premieres and cabinet, um, it's one issue, they have control and they can delve into every, but when you have a split there, that ca- causes some problems because then who's going to take responsibility for that? Um, in terms of the financial aspects, um, it should be Treasury, uh, but they have decided that that's not their role, um, as admitted by them. So, um, because they have the, the, they should have the expertise and the knowledge to be able to monitor, um, agencies, it should be them. Um, but ultimately, the governments, the, you know, the premier is responsible for what happens. Um, and, and so a group in Treasury, um, well, when I say a group, Treasury itself as, should be looking at these things, should be monitoring and should know, should know exactly what's spent on, on these areas. Um, and it, and it, and we noticed your frustration just reading through it. Um, they don't, they don't know, they give you, they give you one answer, but it's incomplete. Um, and then you have to go to some other, uh, area to get the rest of it. Uh, it just doesn't make any sense.
And so in terms of how that gets regulated, like, it's not like that, and, you know, a bit of legislation was passed that said Treasury, you don't need to worry about this. So it seems like over the past two decades, there's been this increasing, um, devolution and lack of transparency and accountability. What do we now need to do to bring it back? Is that done through, would that ordinarily be through a, you know, a premier's, um, guidance note or would it be, like, how, how does that kind of change happen?
Can I just ask a supplementary to that, just by way of comparison? You know, we had that discussion about the old Public Works Department. So if I could put it in crude terms, current model, Treasury, Transporter Department, here's a lump of money, go and do what you want to do with the tunnel. Um, you've spent the money, there's a big blow-up in the newspaper about how inefficient it is, bad minister. That's pretty much the model now, right? Under the old model, was it a case of Treasury, here's a lump of money, Department of Public Works, go and spend it on a road or whatever? Did they then have to come back to Treasury as the Public Works Department saying, this is how we spent it?
The, the allocations wouldn't have changed, the, the allocations would still be by department, uh, you know, previously as well as now, because that's the way the structure is in terms of budgeting. If you look at the budget papers, their allocations are by agency, so they couldn't just give a lump to Public Works and let them spend it. Um, it's still by department, but you had Public Works involved in all sorts of things. They were able to get themselves involved in, in the projects, you know, in the big projects, in the actual physical projects. Um, and that's where the difference, I think, lies. Um, but in terms...
If I, if I were playing devil's advocate, I'm just, I'm just preempting the, the other side of the argument, if you like. Well, what accountability was there when the Public Works Department were doing it? You know, how did we know the taxpayer was getting value for money then? Would be the academic question to ask.
Well, it was an academic, uh, I'll give an academic answer. It was an academic, uh, I'll give an academic answer.
Yeah, that's why I asked it.
Recalling my history in the Council on the Cost of Government, and I know this committee's been very interested in health expenditure. One of the things we noted was that there was no centralized purchasing of drugs and pharmaceuticals. It was done by individual area health services. And hence the government wasn't taking advantage of its market power to drive good prices for those things. And that, I think, is, Public Works was in charge of that, but they couldn't really tell us how much was being spent on that. They quickly started the project on it and I can't recall what they found, but, um, it wasn't something that Public Works was doing at that stage.
But possibly because the information systems were not as good as they are now. I mean, you're talking-
Well, that's true, that's true, yes. And they certainly were trying to get it. But that, I've said my-
Yeah, sorry, I interrupted.
Getting back to the Chair's question is, it seems to me that the way that it would be done would be a Premier's memorandum. A Premier issuing a memorandum to all agencies, um, explaining what the arrangements are, who they're accountable to, um, when big projects are underway. Um, they need to, uh, monitor them themselves and then, um, provide any reports on those projects, um, either way. But that, um, the central agencies would have the, would be tasked with the role to check on those, um, those projects. And, and they won't know which projects will be monitored, which will be checked, which will be gone into to see. For example, if there's a, if there's an overspend, everybody will know because they'll want more money from, from Treasury. So on a big project, they're not gonna, they can't hide that, you know, because they need the money. They'll need to request the extra funding. So that's where the central agencies come in and, and, um, find out what's going on. But the, the Premier needs to set down that process. It can't be done by, um, a single agency.
So the, so the Premier could issue a memorandum that said, the buck stops with you, Treasury. I want you to actually understand how much is being spent on consultants, et cetera, and actually monitor and, and enforce compliance with guidelines, et cetera. That could be something the Premier could do.
Absolutely. And all agencies need to know that, that that's the arrangement. Uh, because as you say, they, they've sort of slipped along and changed the, the intention so that no one knows anything. They, they don't know what's going on in, in one department. And we're relying on, there's this New South Wales Procurement Board made up of agency heads, for God's sake. And they're reporting, agency heads are reporting to eight agency heads, often themselves. So, um, I know they have deputies or they have standings for membership, but it just, I mean, that is just, it really is Mickey Mouse stuff, isn't it? It'd be laughable if it wasn't so serious. Um, that's not accountability, that's just checking on one's own work. Or, or, or wrong.
Yep. Um, any other questions? No, I'll just check. Nope, we're all good. Um, I think that probably, unless there's anything you wanted to add, I think that probably brings us to the end. Are there any final thoughts? No? Well, thank you so much, um, for coming today.
Sorry, Chair, I did want to just go over one thing that sort of tweaked my interest in your submission. Um, and it was with respect to the Carr era. You put, I'll quote your submission. This was brought home, this is on page 11, um, when the New South Wales Council on the Cost of Government, which you referred to earlier, prepared revised guidelines on service competition policy in 1997. I thought this was an interesting model. They were issued to outline the Carr government's policies regarding contracting out. Rather than requiring CEOs to outsource as much as possible, the guidelines required CEOs to know their costs and operate efficiently. If market testing through informal inquiries or formal benchmarking exercises indicated that a particular activity was inefficient relative to the costs of obtaining services from alternative suppliers, then CEOs were obliged to find out why and do something about it. If these efforts failed, outsourcing was to be considered as a live option. I thought that was an interesting model because it, it placed competitive attention on the public sector to get productivity up internally. And if that didn't work, then outsourcing was looked. Is that a model that you advocate?
It was one we did advocate. That's why I think the Premier issued it as a memorandum. But it, um, as I said, got white-handed a bit by agencies who didn't want meddling in their affairs. And-
And, and Treasury and the central agencies, uh, didn't want to enforce it because it was been, it was a suggestion from the Council on the Cost of Government.
Right. So it was an internal sort of territorial thing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that could possibly explain it. It's also, people tend to be very defensive if you, I mean, I found enthusiasm for pointing out defects in public sector accountability, Wayne, the longer a government's been in office. It's good the first year. Changes.
Probably another paper in that.
Might be another inquiry.
Try and get as much done in the first year.
Thank you very much. Um, that brings us to the end of this session. To the extent that there are supplementary questions or questions taken on notice, um, you'll have 21 days to respond to those. Um, the committee secretary will be in touch. Um, that concludes our morning hearing. We'll be going to lunch and we'll come back at two o'clock uh, with witnesses from the New South Wales Treasury. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks. Really appreciate it.
Yeah, that could be interesting.
Welcome back. Thank you for being here today. So I now welcome our next witnesses from New South Wales Treasury and the New South Wales Procurement Board. Ms Campbell and Mr DeMato, there is no need for you to swear an oath or an affirmation, as you've already done so at an earlier hearing of this inquiry. However, could the other witnesses please state your names and position titles and then swear either an oath or an affirmation, starting to my left?
Hi, I'm Marina Vanderwalt, Deputy Secretary, Financial Management and Services at Treasury, and I'll be swearing an oath. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you very much.
Shaun Smith, Chief Operating Officer, Department of Planning and Environment, and appearing as a delegated member of the Procurement Board. I solemnly, sincerely, and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Ms Young.
I'm Mandy Young, Chief Operating Officer of the Department of Customer Service. Solemnly and sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given to me will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Ms Manning, Chief Executive Score in construction in South Wales, Deputy Secretary with the Department of Education. I solemnly, sincerely, and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you very much. Has anyone got any statement or anything else that they'd like to deliver at this point?
Yes Chair, I'm going to make an opening statement on behalf of the attendees today.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you again for the opportunity to participate as a witness in this hearing today. My name is Sonia Campbell. I'm the Deputy Secretary Commercial at New South Wales Treasury. And I appear today as the delegated Chair of the New South Wales Procurement Board. Today, I'm joined by four of my New South Wales Procurement Board colleagues from across New South Wales Government. Mr Shaun Smith, the Chief Operating Officer at Department of Planning and Environment, Ms Mandy Young, Mr Alpha DiAtamo, and Mr Anthony Manning. I am also joined by Ms Marina Vanderwalt, the Deputy Secretary, Financial Management and Services in New South Wales Treasury. Ms Vanderwalt's team are responsible for the collation and reporting of the New South Wales Total State Sector Accounts, which include the financial reporting of consultancy engagements, as well as financial management for Treasury as an agency. We look forward to further supporting the committee and answering your questions today. As you're aware, from the New South Wales Government's submission to this committee, the Public Works and Procurement Act provides the legislative framework for both government-wide procurement policy, as well as actual procurement by New South Wales Government agencies. The Act establishes the Procurement Board and is currently subject to the direction and control of the Minister for Finance in the exercise of her functions. The Board has statutory objectives, functions, and powers, including developing and implementing a government-wide strategic approach to procurement, confirming and approving the government-wide New South Wales procurement policy framework, and establishing accreditation programs for government agencies to directly procure goods and services subject to terms and conditions. The procurement function within government is part of an evolving landscape, and the Board, working with the Minister, will need to adjust for this to remain fit for purpose. In the past, the Board has had a focus on implementing the decentralisation of procurement responsibilities across government. That focus shifted in more recent years to deliver procurement policy and directions in response to natural disasters and the COVID pandemic. Now is the time for the Board to be responding under a new government and rapidly evolving market conditions with respect to consultancy firms and public sector procurement guidance. By way of example, the Board have met three times in the past two months, twice out of session, to discuss matters relating to PWC, and have taken actions to suspend PWC from providing taxation services to New South Wales Government. And more recently, has issued a direction to the sector that requires all new or varied engagements with PWC to be approved by the Secretary of the Department. This is in addition to the requirement for attestations regarding conflicts of interest to be provided by PWC for any staff engaged in New South Wales Government work. As you've previously heard, New South Wales Government procures through a devolved model across agencies. In practice, this means that the procurement policy framework is operationalised by government agencies. That said, all government agencies that are subject to the Act must comply with mandatory parts of the New South Wales Procurement Policy Framework for procurement of any kind, including consultancy engagements. Government agencies must also comply with the conditions set out for accredited agencies and unaccredited agencies respectively. In relation to the definition of consultants, within New South Wales Government, the term consultant is defined solely for the purposes of reporting consultant expenditure by agencies. This definition is set out both in a Procurement Board direction, as well as the New South Wales Treasury Policy and Guidelines, Agency Direction for Mandatory Annual Returns to Treasury. The definition of consultant for this purpose includes: A person or organisation engaged under contract on a temporary basis to provide recommendations or professional advice to assist decision-making by management. Generally, it is the advisory nature of the work that differentiates a consultant from other contractors. Consultancy services are a subset of overall professional services, provided by a pool of over three and a half thousand diverse suppliers pre-qualified under the Performance and Management Services Scheme to supply professional services, including consultancy services over fifteen engagement types. The top nineteen suppliers as part of the Business Advisory Services category report monthly to New South Wales Procurement, who in turn report monthly to the Board. What are we doing to improve use and management of consultants? The March 2023 Audit Office Report noted that ongoing improvements had been made by New South Wales Procurement in relation to the government's oversight and use of consultants. That said, there is always opportunities to improve, and the recommendations from that report are currently being responded to with the Board's guidance. At the meeting of the Board in May 2023, the Board endorsed a program of work to address the Auditor General's recommendations for New South Wales Procurement and the Board, including working with agencies to improve and refine the definition of professional services, consultancy services, and non-consultancy services. The Board is also being supported by New South Wales Procurement to improve the quality of strategic consultancy data from agencies to assess and determine government-wide strategic risks and issues. There has been much inquiry and media discussion in relation to public sector capabilities and potential overuse of consultancy services by governments, both at the federal and state levels. Although there are opportunities for the public sector to increase its breadth and depth of capabilities, there is also a role for consultancy firms to provide strategic advice to government. We saw this during the response to several natural disasters and the COVID pandemic over the past few years. There is a balance to be struck between investing in core public sector capabilities versus flexibility to seek specialist advice when required. We will learn from this and other inquiries, presenting an opportunity to recalibrate the core capabilities needed within New South Wales Government. Finally, Treasury as a devolved agency is also currently developing further guidance to support its own staff in managing consultancy engagements. And this is to ensure the compliance with procurement rules and government-wide reporting requirements, as well as increasing the quality of outputs for the state and its people. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that update. Can I just clarify one bit of it before asking sort of the first question, I guess? Was that a new, since you were last before us, you talked about secretary approval now for PWC engagements? Is that additional to the measures that you had outlined in your answers to questions on notice?
That is correct, Chair.
When did that take effect?
The Procurement Board Direction was released. Sorry, I'll get you the exact date.
And is that the secretary of each agency that the work falls under?
No, it's at a department level, unless otherwise delegated to a CEO or a chief procurement officer. Sorry, Ms Boyd, I will find that exact date for you. Fourteenth of July.
Fourteenth of July, thank you. So that was a Procurement Board Direction. Okay, just in terms of that pre-qualification scheme that you referred to, three and a half thousand pre-qualified providers on there. At what point do people get taken off, or do organisations get taken off of that list?
Yeah, when then, you know, when an agency is notified of, whether it's poor performance or a conflict of interest, the matter is investigated within that agency, and then the scheme owner has the responsibility for removing the supplier. So in the case of the taxation services, that was a matter that is managed by New South Wales Procurement within Treasury. And as we discussed previously, that was advice that was provided by Mr Hong to the Secretary of Treasury to remove PWC from the taxation services. There are other examples across different schemes that are managed within different parts of New South Wales Government.
Okay, so the PWC were removed from the taxation services part of the pre-qualification scheme, but they remain on the remainder of the sort of service items or whatever on that list. In your answers to questions taken on notice from that fifteenth of June hearing,
Yes.
You noted the other, so we've got the secretary approval for the PWC engagements at this point. That's for all PWC engagements, or is that again for tax?
No, that's for all engagements. It's the current direction across the sector.
Okay. And then we have a self-attestation statement that is required from, or some sort of self-attestation action from PWC that's required for each of those engagements, whether tax or not, to say that no one involved in that federal PWC tax scandal is involved in the New South Wales Government's work, correct?
That's correct.
We've since received the terms of reference for the Ziggy Switkowski review from PWC. And notably, it talks about only looking at the culture of the organisation as it stands today. So it's not going to that review, as we understand it from the terms of reference, is not going to go back and actually investigate wrongdoing or seek to weed out anyone who was involved in that scandal. Given that PWC isn't doing any kind of robust investigation into that wrongdoing, how can you be sure that the people that PWC is engaging or that you're engaging from PWC for government work haven't been involved in that tax scandal?
Thank you for the question, Ms Boyd. I think, given that the practices as best we know were related to taxation services, and we've taken the step to suspend any taxation services, together with the attestations being provided, we would be seeking, you know, to assess that. Obviously, with any procurement, the CVs of people being proposed will form part of those proposals that are assessed by government agencies. And I would think it would be, should be fairly evident on the face of it, you know, whether people being proposed would have been, or would have been likely to have any relationship with that federal tax work.
Given that the PWC tax scandal came to light because people had sort of raised the alarm, who weren't government, it's not that government identified it, it's not, you know, this is, these scandals are coming to light because of the work of investigative journalists and, you know, people on inquiries. When we look at the PWC tax scandal, is the New South Wales Government not concerned that there could be, that this is just, you know, the tip of the iceberg? That there could not be more examples of this that just haven't been uncovered?
Look, I think that's a matter that agencies would need to have a look at in terms of historical procurement practices. I think I can speak, you know, in the context of Treasury and obviously the well-publicised audit that was done around the establishment of Tahi and the use of consultants there. And I think as we discussed at the last committee hearing, Treasury took that seriously, engaged Stephen Sedwix to do an independent report and have published that report publicly and accepted those recommendations and implementing approvals across the department in response to that. From a Procurement Board perspective, you know, we're aware of some complaints that have been actioned, but nothing, you know, I think of the significance of what has been revealed at the federal level.
I guess some of us thought that the Switkowski review was actually going to basically check that this wasn't a case of few bad apples and was going to investigate whether there was, you know, other problems within the organisation. We're now not getting that assurance. We're only getting a, you know, a review of the current culture of PWC. Does that new information change the basis on which the government decided to take this very limited approach of only taking PWC off the list for tax matters?
I think it's, it is an ongoing conversation. So the Board have recently approved establishing a specific Audit and Risk Subcommittee of the Board that will be looking specifically at supplier complaints and a range of other audit and risk matters. You know, this would be a question that is relevant for that committee to consider. In the context of supplier complaints, we had a conversation recently that, you know, we don't have the investigative powers, nor do we have the resources within the Board to carry out those sorts of investigations. But I guess there is a question around whether that should be done, and if so, who should be doing it?
Given, again, in your answers to questions on notice, you gave us the information that expenditure for tax services represents approximately 1.2% of the government's overall business advisory services spend with PWC. Are you able to tell us what Are you able to tell us what percent, that's quite small, 1.2% of business advisory services?
Yes.
What does it represent in terms of overall spend on P W C services by the government?
We would have that detail, I may have it to hand, but I'll just take that on notice for now if I can.
This 1.2% is pretty tiny amount of the work. If I, if I was P W C, looking at the consequences of a scandal of this nature, and seeing that, you know, once we include the overall spend on P W C from the government, we're probably looking at way less than 1% of our business being penalised because of that action. Does that seem proportionate to you, now that you've got these figures in front of you?
I think the example of P W C is a complex one, because they've taken the steps to actually separate out their government consulting business from other services, and so that is something as a board we are monitoring, and-
They haven't done it yet, though, have they?
They've obviously announced the intention to do it, and are moving towards that, but we need to look at how that works within our pre-qualification schemes, hence the response from the board to require any engagement with P W C entities to be approved by the Secretary of the Department. As for the new entity, then they will need to go through a process to satisfy the pre-qualification conditions to be part of those pre-qualification schemes.
Can we turn to K P M G, who are also still on that pre-qualification list?
Yes.
You mentioned before the Tahie debacle, you didn't call it a debacle, but I will, and, you know, I think some really valid questions have been asked about the consequences for K P M G on the basis of that. You mentioned the Sedgwick report-
Yes.
-which made very modest recommendations in relation to use of consultants, and certainly didn't go towards talking about K P M G in any way. Given the very real findings from this, this committee in its previous form, in relation to the, the way in which K P M G was, you know, employed or appointed by both Treasury and Transport, you had the, the Secretary of Transport telling the K P M G partner involved in the Treasury, in the Transport, sorry, the other way around, the Secretary of Treasury, telling the K P M G partner involved in the Transport work effectively what to do. There were some very real issues there around the government's use of consultants. I don't see anywhere in that Sedgwick report a recommendation that actually deals with what, I guess the consequences should be of the Treasury's use of K P M G. Are you seeing something different to me? Has there been another, has there been any other consequences for K P M G when it comes to the, their use for consultancy services by the government?
I don't think specifically, if you talk about consequences for K P M G, but I think there are consequences, you know, for Treasury as a result of what's happened, which have been taken very seriously, the Sedgwick report was the first part of that, but it's the, the rigor and the processes that we are putting in place in terms of how we engage consultants going forward, which will ultimately have ramifications, not just for K P M G, but for any consultant looking to work with Treasury, in terms of how we procure, how we manage, and how we monitor performance. And that's part of the recommendations that have come out of the Sedgwick review, in terms of the improvement programme that we have, have and are putting in place, that I think, as I said last time, Ms Boyd, being monitored through our internal audit and risk committee all the way up to our executive board.
We've had cheating on ethics tests, we've had K P M G actually, you know, acknowledging that they made mistakes in the context of the Senate inquiries, we've had the report from the Audit General, we've had the inquiry from this, this committee here. What does it take to get taken off of the pre-qualification list? Why is K P M G still sitting there? Does it, does there need to be a media scandal before we actually take action to restrict the use of these consultants?
I mean, K P M G, like others, are a very large organisation with many, many employees. You know, I spoke previously about, you know, the way that issues that are notified and are escalated in terms of performance being reviewed, and there are a range of options, you know, to procuring agencies, from, you know, terminating agreements for poor performance or breaches of confidentiality or conflicts of interest, through to escalating that up to the board. Based on the information that I have, there hasn't been anything notified of significance enough for the board that would warrant a decision to remove K P M G as an entity, you know, from pre-qualification.
Is that the problem, then, that we end up with, basically we have a system where somebody in an agency or department level has to say, oh, I wasn't happy with this work, or something's happened with this particular piece of work, and then escalate that up to the procurement board, as opposed to the procurement board having a look at the organisations on the pre-qualification list and saying, hang on a minute, there's all of these questions over these organisations, this is a red flag, we need to take them off of the pre-qualification list and take a look at every single engagement. Shouldn't that be what we're doing?
Look, it's something that we can consider, Ms Boyd, but with over three and a half thousand diverse suppliers on the pre-qualification scheme, again, that is a very large task for a team that is administering those schemes.
I absolutely appreciate that, but with respect, these are the big four-
Yes.
-that are currently, you know, you've had plenty of notice, everybody in this room has had plenty of notice of the K P M G evidence, and of P W C, and of Deloitte, and all the rest of them, so it doesn't, it's not like anyone's had to go and do some research to monitor it, we're not talking about the three and a half thousand, we're talking about these particular entities that you do have notice of because they're in the media. At what point, whose responsibility is it to actually say, well, these organisations are clearly not fit to be on the pre-qualification list? We may still entertain some work with them, but in terms of getting our big tick of approval, we're going to take that off for now.
Yeah, look, I think it's a question that we can take away, Ms Boyd, in terms of how we do routinely review and, and look at that pre-qualification list. You know, I would also expect that as part of routine procurements, you know, individuals, which essentially these professional services firms are, are, you know, being assessed rigorously in terms of past experience, capability, you know, when they're being selected to undertake government work.
Thank you, Chair. Can I ask a related, but I guess smaller question? So we're saying that there's three and a half thousand entities listed, I'm sure pretty much everyone in this room watched the Four Corners report yesterday, and one of the, the things that came-
Well, I, I watched, me too, me too, Scott, I watched it before, it was on Ivy on Sunday night, so I watched it on Sunday night. I did watch some of it last night. I won't say which was more enjoyable. So there was a suggestion that one of the issues is with trying to collate information, and we've talked about this, I think, with you before and with others before us, that getting data on what's happening is quite difficult, three and a half thousand people on this, organisations or entities on this list. When we say that K P M G is pre-qualified, is that K P M G every bit, or is that K P M G P T Y L two D, K P M G consultancy services X Y Z, K P M G? How does that work?
Yeah, it's a good question. So there are different entities within these big firms with different ABNs attached, and they would be assessed for pre-qualification against different category services, which becomes a capability assessment to be able to perform those services. So they wouldn't be across every category, but would be across ones where they have applied for pre-qualification.
And is there no crossover in any of those entities? In terms of, do they offer some of the same kinds of work, or they're all offer discreet services?
I mean, there's the larger entities, all of them have different examples of smaller, more boutique entities, you know, some, have some in the Aboriginal consulting space, or in the ICT space, you know, where they may be pre-qualified separately, but all of the big four are pre-qualified under the Business Advisory Services Scheme, which is the scheme where we have the reporting direct from suppliers to New South Wales Procurement centrally.
So would we be able to get a list of how many entities that fall under each of the big four are separately listed on the pre-qual?
Yes, I think we could provide that information to you.
That would be helpful, thank you.
Can I just pick you up on that last comment you made about, you know, each of these people who are doing the work are individuals, which obviously they are, but the pre-qualification scheme pre-qualifies the firm, not the individual.
Yes.
So is that not part of the problem here, that we have these massive organisations that have so many different individuals sitting under them? Is it possible for us, or is it sensible for us to be pre-qualifying those firms as a whole?
I'm not sure how else you would do it, but I think it does come back to the question of, you know, strategic procurement capability within the public sector, in being able to assess tenders that come in from any of these firms, in terms of the lead partners that are proposed, the, the people that are proposed to work on it, their level of experience, and all of the mandatory tendering requirements that form part of that assessment process.
Do you think that the pre-qualification list provides comfort for those using it, that they don't need to also do additional checks? So I'm thinking in particular, we were speaking with Dr Williams earlier from the CPI, and we were talking about the situation where you'll have these big firms doing auditing work for a particular commercial client, and then they will, you know, another arm will go off and do advisory work on policy that would have a direct impact on that particular client that they've got in order. Would that sort of conflict of interest, or potential conflict of interest, or even just the fact of that other work that the auditing arm is being, is doing, be considered at the point of whether or not to procure? Or do those things only get disclosed once there's been a procurement, or not even? What happens?
They should be disclosed as part of the procurement process, these would be standard questions in terms of recent work experience, disclosing any conflicts of interest, that would be assessed as part of a, an evaluation process.
So they should, so if, if a consulting firm has just, sorry, start that again, if a consulting firm is going through the procurement process, and they're putting in their, you know, their, their details, then they will have in that a list of their conflicts, or potential conflicts. Would it be expected that they would list not just their consulting clients, but also their auditing clients within that?
I would think if it's in respect of auditing functions, then that should be a standard thing that agencies are assessing if they're procuring those types of services.
Thank you. Take, yeah, go ahead.
Back to the associated entities and the like, would that pick up those associated entities as well? For instance, if it was under the banner, you were doing something with a consulting arm, for instance, would it then pick up potentially the accounting arm, or the IT services arm along?
If you're talking about the pre-qualification, it would pick up the entity that is pre-qualified and the ABN that's associated with it, but again, you know, it enables you to go and seek a tender, or a quote from people who are pre-qualified, they still have to go through a tender process and provide the information that is requested from the procuring agency.
In terms of that information, does that apply just to that entity, or does it apply to associated entities as well?
It would apply to the entity that you're proposing to contract with.
So just picking up again on the process for removing a firm from the pre-qualification, or raising issues. So you said before, you know, it's, I guess reliant on whoever's doing the work with the consulting firm to raise the flag with the procurement board and to go through that process. One of the interesting things, coming back from all of the great data that we've received from Health in relation to their use of consultants, and listing each of those contracts out, has, we asked the question of, you know, how many of these contracts were subject to a post-evaluation, sorry, a post-engagement evaluation, and the vast majority of them came back saying, excuse me, came back saying that, you know, basically the work was done, so we paid, as opposed to there being an actual assessment process where perhaps the forms filled out, or something along those lines. And again, when I raised this with Dr Williams this morning, it was, there was a discussion around whether or not the, the public sector is actually now in a position to be able to review those contracts properly, and the, the quality of that work properly. Given that, given that perhaps there's not either the resources or the expertise to conduct those reviews, and given the data we've got back on the thousands of contracts where it's just, there's not been a, you know, a real post-engagement review, is that the best system for relying on whether or not good work has been done from consultants?
Thank you for the question, and we, we talked about this last time in the context of Treasury, and having had time to reflect on it, you know, we have very mu, I went back and asked the questions internally in Treasury, we have looked at how we raise awareness of buyers within our agency around those expectations, and the toolkits that we provide in order to do that, and, and a lot of it, you know, relies on, you know, when engagements are undertaken, them being notified, we now have prompts to follow up with people, or buyers internally, who have engaged consultants to actually undertake those sorts of performance reviews. So as I said, Ms Boyd, I think this is an evolving landscape, and, you know, we are looking at lessons to be learnt, whether it be from the audit report, or all these types of inquiries as to how those practices can be improved, but noting, you know, it's a very big, diverse New South Wales public sector, so, you know, we're looking to try and set that overarching guidance that would then need to be operationalised within the agencies.
And it's, it's clear that there is a lot of work to do-
Yes.
-and I appreciate that it is evolving, and the new government and the new administration is, is thinking through all of these issues. The, in your answers to questions on notice taken from the first hearing, you talk about implementing that recommendation from the Audit General's report around these, these reviews of, of work, and saying that you're, you're committing to do, by December 2023, to conduct regular assessments of the quality of work done by consultants. What will that look like, do you know, and what's the process for, what, what process have you embarked on to try and work out what that will look like?
Yeah, perhaps I might actually refer that to my colleague, Ms VanderWalt, so within her team, within Financial Management and Services, sits the sort of programme for implementing those recommendations?
Yes, so my team prepares the annual reports and coordinates the annual reports for the whole sector, and we also provide guidance to the sector in terms of what the expectation is of those reporting requirements. So I might just take a step back and give the committee just a bit of context, because we are in the final stages of the implementation of the Government Sector Act, which means that all agencies this year, for the financial year in 23, are moving to reporting under the G S F Act, where previously they were reporting under Annual Reporting Acts, and what that means is we are going through a stage implementation, so again, a good opportunity to link in any improvements in our annual reporting. So for FY23, we released a annual reporting framework in February, which is on Treasury's website, which contains mandatory reporting requirements. Those annual reports also provide requirements for financial reports, so this is, sits above the financial reporting requirement, and in those annual, in the annual reporting framework, we have specifically asked and mandated that agencies provide us with information on the use of consultants, and there's a threshold, more detailed information for consultancy expenditure above $50,000 per, per engagement, and then an aggregate of the number and the total of consultancy expenditure below 50,000. That information is reported in the, in the agency's financial reports, and that- That information is reported in the in the agency's financial reports and that's audited by the Audit Office.
Will that include the local health districts from?
Well, at this stage, great question. Um it's the agencies under the G S F Act um that are required to report. So for this financial year. It is the same agencies that were required to report last year, so for FY twenty three, no. For the next financial year, we are currently developing a risk based framework, an annual reporting risk based framework. Where as part of the transition, we're moving to a different way of reporting, which is all agencies are required to report. Unless they are exempt. And so at the moment, we are going through the process to determine which agencies will be exempt uh from reporting. Um and that work is very much on foot right now.
Thank you. So in terms of the post review engage, like the um, I keep saying post review engagement, the post engagement review. Process, um I'm just gonna have to ask you, are you bringing consultants on to help you with any of that or is that a? Please tell me no, no, very good. Um so will that be a a sort of more? Um would, I guess, will there be a framework where you are asking agencies to look more? More deeply or provide more detail at the end of an engagement after they've paid the bill? Is that part of what is planned?
So what we collect, um and I'll refer back to um Sonia um now, but what we collect is the um. What's actually been expensed.
Hmm.
And it's all linked to the procurement policies and the definition of the use of consultants. Um so that's the transparency and the accountability side, um in terms of the policy side.
So the the performance um is supported by New South Wales procurement for the whole of Treasury. Uh and we are implementing those recommendations for two reasons, one because of the Sedgwick report, but also because of the Audit Office recommendations. And so uh there were a number of recommendations for all agencies, um and so I think it would be. A question for each agency, how they're proposing to implement that sort of performance feedback. I think the question for the board would be, you know, what level of reporting or information might we want to see? Um coming up from agencies once that that sort of performance feedback uh is being embedded at an agency level.
I'll ask you that question then. What 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 is it that you will expect to see then by the end of December twenty three, when they come back to the board? What is the the level of review that you'll expect to have occurred? At least with some of the the major pro- uh major engagements.
Um as a board, I don't think we've determined that yet, Ms. Boyd. Um we have recently looked at uh an action plan in relation to data and reporting to the board. Um but specifically around, you know, performance reporting is not something collectively as a board.
Okay, so when in the um in paragraph one point two of your questions, answers to questions on notice, so please. Can you bring it a little bit forward? Oh, I think maybe it's not working. Yeah, it's good now.
Okay, I just want to provide a quick update in respect to what we have been putting in place from the first of July this financial year.
Thank you.
To achieve two two key aspects. One is compliance in respect to the district's reporting. So that we can prepare ourselves to comply with the new guidelines and therefore reporting in our annual report. In respect to professional service and consultancies. And all districts have been requested to uh provide all the engagements to our chief procurement officer. Um anything about thirty thousand dollars from the first of July, this is a directive we issue internally. And at the same time, we are collecting all these details so that we can then make sure that the post engagement reviews are conducted. While we're introducing, as I mentioned on last, uh hearing, uh a V M S, a vendor management system. That allows then to facilitate, if you want, or streamline the process of collecting all these details.
Hmm.
So we prepare ourselves for this financial year, as in the twenty three, twenty four, uh to make sure we have the data and that we can comply not only with the. Audit General recommendations, but also with our internal processes in regards to post engagement reviews.
Thank you. I'm still trying to understand though, when we say in the questions on notice, um the answers. Paragraph one point two, um. New South Wales Treasury is therefore subsequently implementing recommendation five from the A G E report for all New South Wales Government Agencies to by December twenty twenty three. Conduct regular assessments of the quality of work done by consultants. Um at the moment, that is not being done from what I can see, and and again, Mr. Tomato, uh you know, the the health data we got back. Um the answer to that question was, we paid the bill, basically. So what is going to be done to actually ensure the quality of this work?
So I think, Ms. Boyd, um you know, you've hea- heard what Health has put in place, Treasury uh has put in place. Um, you know, processes whereby all engagements are registered centrally with our New South Wales procurement team. Uh I think the thing to note is that they don't manage these contracts. There's a difference between procurement and contract administration, and so it is the, you know, buyers within Treasury or the agency. That would manage that performance. The role of procurement then becomes prompting at intervals or at the end of that engagement, most likely. A review of the quality of that performance. Um and being able to record that centrally so that that information uh can be considered at a whole of agency level.
Um I'll just go to Dr. Kane and then I'll come back.
I just wanted a quick follow up, uh Mr. Tomato, about the vendor management system. I seem to recall that in your respo- well, no, sorry, in Treasury's response. To the Auditor General's report, there was commentary to the effect that progress was slow on the vendor management system because of. It was either departmental or agency level responses, and I note that you've said there's progress. So I just wondered if you could briefly explain. What's changed that has allowed that progress to be made, because it seemed to be the implication that it was something at a different level that was a barrier.
Um I wouldn't say it was a barrier, there's certainly challenges, no doubt, as in implementing such, you know, change into a large and complex system. But I feel that, given that we now have to introduce all these requirements across the system, all the districts have to report. Uh the most efficient, effective way to achieve the goal or be transparent would be through a system, and so I feel that the cost benefit.
The agencies to do it, right, okay. So that's the change from uh from asking them to implement it to you now sort of driving that more.
Yes, that's right, and I and I presume if you if you think about the cost of implementing that across the system when effectively the districts didn't have to. Report annually at the level of details the minister has reported, that's changed, and so that's.
No, no, thank you, that answers it. It's a change in where the directions were, yeah, thank you.
Could I just um, can I just ask you a follow up as well on that sort of structure you outlined? So you've got um. Treasury budgeting for agency spend, like giving allocations for the agency to spend, and then. They do, it's on them to do a performance review of the spend. And then, but then that's reported back to procurement, who then may also say, well, how did you go? Was it worthwhile? Is that kind of how?
It it from a Treasury rather than a sector wide perspective, yes, so. Um like all agencies, we have a central procurement function, and within Treasury, that sits within New South Wales procurement. Um they provide the documentation and the advice and the templates and the tools in accordance with the procurement policy framework. For all buyers within Treasury, uh and support them through that procurement process. Um the buyer within Treasury manages the scope that they have procured and the deliverables and the output. Um and what we're putting in place, you know, in terms of the um whole of life of of, you know, an engagement. Is the piece that's been called out as missing at the end, um is the review of that performance. Um and how we then capture that data so that we are learning from it, that if, you know. Um a particular supplier has not performed well, or the quality of the deliverables were not what was expected. Um that, you know, that should be um taken into consideration in terms of any future engagement. I think the question being asked is how might we do that, you know, more broadly across the sector?
Yeah, because I I'm just interested in, so that's in the case of purchase of goods and services, what about a project? Like a, like a, an underground road tunnel or something?
Yeah, so Treasury doesn't procure tunnels.
So transport would s- would spend the money?
Yeah, well, you have um uh Mr. Manning here today representing school infrastructure, uh which is an agency that procures construction.
We also don't buy tunnels either. Just I don't make that point. So um in the construction procurement space, um we work through a thing called um contractor performance reports. So the panels that we operate through from an infrastructure perspective require, I think it's quarterly, we produce a contractor performance report. So whether it's an architect, an engineer or a building contractor, we produce a a report. That report is completed by the, usually by the project director in discussion with the consultant or contractor about their performance. Um they may have a different view on whether it's gone well in the last quarter or not gone well, but then it's usually sort of agreed between both parties that the outcome is the outcome. Uh we do then re- report that information into the main panel, but as an organisation, we then use it to.
Panel being?
So the main panel is a, it's a whole of government infrastructure panel, so architects, engineers, building contractors, it's a prequel scheme. Not not unlike the consultant one, but slightly but slightly different. Um but we also use that information from a agency procurement perspective in terms of whether we might want to work with that consultant ever again. Um and we work with a consultant where they don't necessarily get a great response, we work with them to see whether actually it's something that. That we've done in the way we've gone about procuring it or something they've done in terms of the skills, and we may have a conversation about removing. Resources if they're not the right resources, or we may simply make a decision that that we don't really want to engage them again because our experience wasn't good. So there is a, there is a model. In past, it's been patchy in terms of kind of uh all of the teams. Putting all that information together, but over the last six months, so the last twelve months, we've kind of driven that quite hard to make sure that we are up to date, so. So that that there are kind of some precedents that I think the procurement board will look at in terms of that process. But it's kind of a, it's a single sheet of paper, uh and it goes through and you you basically give a score, I think it's between zero and five in terms of whether it's. It's accurate, timely, sort of, you know, the the standard sort of, sort of process.
So that's all kind of autonomous in the sense that it's agency based review.
But it it goes back into um into the uh into the owners of the panel, so that the panel is a whole of government panel.
Yeah, okay.
So they collate all that information from all those agencies, so we might, we might find a pattern with an architect or an engineer that isn't necessarily delivering. Cross agencies what they might want to do.
It's outside of your remit because, I mean, just to use that emblematic sort of one that everyone knows about, these massive. Flowouts in infrastructure, right?
Yes.
At what point do the eyebrows get raised? Is that back at Treasury when the, when the minister comes asking for, oh, by the way, I need twenty seven, not twelve? Is that, is that the discipline that's enforced?
I think, just, just, can I finish mine?
Yeah, of course.
I wouldn't necessarily associate kind of a project that goes beyond its budget.
Yeah.
With that actually being a consequence of poor performance by either a consultant or a contractor. It, you know, it may simply be, um we find more asbestos in the ground than we thought we would find, and therefore we spend more money, so. So i- if it, if it, there is a performance issue we deal with it within the C P Rs.
Yeah.
That's not necessarily linked to the project has cost more money than we thought it would. That may be, that's more likely to be a a function of scope and a whole range of others. If we do think it's failure on a contractor or or a consultant.
Because the consultant may very well be the one making the assessment that this is how much we think it's gonna cost based on assumptions A B C.
Totally, and if those assumptions prove to be wrong.
Yeah.
That may just be the assumptions are wrong and we all agreed them.
But if they're consistently wrong across a number of projects, there's a problem.
Then as an organisation, if they did that to us, yes, we would, we would be prioritising them on the bottom of our. Our choice of consultants for future projects.
And I guess that, sorry, go ahead, Mr. Primrose.
Uh ju- just one, I I note from your um submission, pages seven to eleven. Um you described the government's arrangements for procurement from devolved government agencies. Um for each of those, how difficult is it to put another column there? Saying how much in terms of monetary value, say for twenty two, twenty three, was involved. By that agency in the use of consultancies.
Uh so if I've understood your question, are you talking about in the way that we're reporting? Uh at a total state sector perspective?
How about I put it in my way?
Yeah, please.
Did the portfolio premiers in twenty two, twenty three, say at the end, use? Um um for the purchase of consultancy services?
So that would be reported through that agency's annual report?
Okay, now rather than go through three thousand annual reports, um how difficult is it? For someone else, such as you guys.
Yes.
Who are involved in organising a particular component of this.
Yes.
To actually have that, so I can open up, and when you present this to the next inquiry in a couple of years' time. There's another, there's another column there that says, well, the body that uses the most consultancy work. Is in fact X.
Yes.
Because I can't tell from this who's using the most consultancy in terms of value of money.
Uh I think we could certainly do that.
Okay, now there's another column I'd like, and that is, and I don't know who'd provide that. And that is for all the other consultancies used by that portfolio. What's missing in terms of our knowledge about the use of education? I mean, what other consultancies other than than for that column? Where else, what what other, what other consultancies would be in another column that you don't have access to?
I I think we just have to um be clear about what definitions we're using in this context, um because.
I'm using a definition of giving money to people to give you advice.
I understand. Um but this is why there's been great debate around the current definition of consultancies. Um and that giving of professional advice to assist decision making versus.
Senate.
Yep.
That we've discovered that the the Defence Department uses four times greater than anyone else in terms of the use of money. I I still don't know who uses the most consultancies, because after um since something like eighteen sixty four. I still don't know from the bureaucracy here or anyone else. Even though we're paying people lots of money and we're trying to regulate them, there's still no agreement in relation to who these consultants actually are. How we define them, I mean, how about someone actually determines, and I I don't know, someone in charge of procurement. Um what, who are you actually giving the money to and calling them consultants and putting a table there? So I can actually tell how much is being given by education to these guys.
I I think the question you want to ask is how much are we spending on professional services firms across? Different types of services.
Okay, now I would imagine, given the number of senior people involved, that should be readily available, shouldn't it?
So it is published in each agency's annual report, and I I take your point about the annual reports and I'll just give it.
I don't go through dozens of annual reports, presumably you're the guys looking at procurement. You must have that centrally. Does anyone in your agency go through and actually have a look at what other people are spending in relation to consultants?
So we do have the data that's provided by agencies and that is amalgamated. The point I was gonna make in relation to annual reports is the information is provided at a point in time into the central procurement team. And there are administrative arrangements that change around the shape of government agencies, so my particular agency has had a machinery of government change every year since two thousand and nineteen.
I used to work, I've ten years of public servant, I know how it works, I know how it changes all the time, and I know how the budget changes every year. So you can't follow actually how much is allocated, but let's go back to a particular time, twenty two, twenty three, okay? I mean, it's it's over, it's gone, for that particular year, you must be able to deliver us an idea centrally. About how much was actually spent, u- using um, using the definition that we've um been given by. Um Ms. Vanderwalt, um in terms of what a consultant is.
We should be able to do that. We're collecting that information for financial year in twenty three, and it's from those agencies that are required to report. So that will capture the um major portfolios across government.
Okay, that would be really valuable, and if I could also then ask if you could include in that what you believe is missing. And who else we need to approach to get that additional information. Because as I said, at this stage, after now being here, sitting here through many things, I still don't know how much is actually being spent on whom. And because we don't have a clear definition, I don't even know for what.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very useful. Um so just coming back then to my question about how we actually work out these consulting. how we actually work out if these consultants are value for money, let's take the example of a business case. So with a business case, which I understand from a lot of accountants to be more art than science in a lot of ways, we're not working, not just working out the cost, but also working out potential benefits and you can, you know, scope that how you like. And as I understand it, and other people disagree, but you can sort of massage those figures a little bit to work out how you get a BCR that comes up with something, you know, that looks reasonable. Now, because there are so many ways to do that, when we come maybe five years' time and we look back at comparisons of business cases, we must be able to say, that one was far off the mark, that one wasn't. But if all we're doing is doing a review at the time we received the document, we're not really able to work out the quality of that, are we? So is there anything within Treasury or procurement where you actually assess the quality of work at that scale?
I think the short answer is probably no. What I would say is that Treasury is undertaking a review currently of its business case guidelines and is consulting across the sector with a view to updating those early next year.
Is it employing consultants to do that?
No, it's not. Not that I'm aware of.
I'm going to ask that question.
Not that I'm aware of. Apologies, I just lost my train of thought.
I feel you off. It's updating its guidelines.
Perhaps while Ms Campbell recollects her thoughts, maybe a couple of thoughts in relation to the quality of the work. Ultimately, in the devolved procurement model, there are a range of officials in public sector agencies who are contracting the work and they are ultimately accountable for assessing the quality of the work that's then delivered to them by their various consultants. And so as a senior official, I will be looking at the work that's provided to me by any firm, whether it's a consulting firm or any other firm, to be perfectly honest. And if I don't think the quality is acceptable, that's a contract management issue that will happen at the point of contract management. And so if you're talking about a business case, there are a whole bunch of guidelines that Treasury does set with respect to business cases, what the inclusion should be, the parameters that people are expected to use to model economic and non-economic and financial and non-financial benefits. So all of those things are laid out in terms of the guidance we give consultants to do that work. If a consultant delivers work that doesn't meet the standards specified by Treasury, that's a matter for contract management in the agency from the accountable authority who's procuring that work to engage with that consultant and get an acceptable quality or follow the performance scheme rules about how they manage that consultant. And that can include even a referral to the procurement board for poor performance.
And, sorry, let me just start with that because I appreciate that that's how it should work in theory. But we saw with TAHIE and with Treasury's engagement with KPMG and that, in that case, there's, there's an element of confirmation bias, let's just put it in a, you know, a nice way, where public officials may be actually looking for a particular answer from a particular consultant, whether they've made that explicit or not. At what point does someone independent come in after the event and look back and say, "Well, actually, that was at, that BCR was completely wrong"?
So I'll come back to the last part of your question, but I, I remembered my train of thought earlier, just to pick that up. So where that independence comes in, not only does Treasury set the guidelines, but obviously business cases get assessed independently through Treasury and ultimately recommendations are made to government around those investments and they become government decisions. So there is, there is that level of independence in Treasury. In the case, for example, of major infrastructure projects, there is additional assurance through insurance, Infrastructure New South Wales, which will look at various stages of a project's lifestyle, lifecycle, both at strategic and final business cases and, and throughout procurement. So there's that added layer of independent assurance there. In terms of your question, at what point do we come back and check whether the business case was quality? I think in a large part, that quality assurance, you know, comes through the processes that I've just described and that scrutiny, you know, so if there's a bias within an agency, then, you know, you would expect an independent scrutiny through both a Treasury and a government decision-making process would be able to identify perhaps where, you know, benefits and costs may not have been accurately reflected. But, but that is the, the process. And I think once a decision is made or an investment decision to support a business case, it then goes back to the agency who was responsible for delivering on that programme of work as to how they manage it.
Can I, sorry? Sorry, Dr Kane was first and then I'll come to you, Mr Farlow.
So I just want to continue on that sort of learning from experience, train, train of questioning and answers. Has New South Wales Treasury or, or New South Wales procurement, given what's been revealed with regards to use of consultants in various inquiries, et cetera, have, have either of those entities embarked on or intend to embark on an audit of overruns or extensions of contracts? We've heard here in, in previous hearings about contracts being extended, or, or my colleague has spoken about budget overruns. Is there a, a view that you're going to collate the information that we have on this across agencies and, and see if there are patterns? Have a look at what we've learnt, have a look at why there's been either overruns or extensions? So, so it might inform how we do things in the future?
I think that's a strategic question to put to the board because the board would then need to ask agencies to invest the time and effort that would be required to undertake that process at an agency level. So New South Wales procurement is not set up centrally to do that. It can support the Treasury Agency Group to do that.
Can it require agencies to provide, can you, can you essentially order agencies to provide you with information or it doesn't have that kind of a?
No, that, that would come through the board.
Okay. Mr Farlow?
Just to pick up on Mr Smith's point in terms of disquiet, for instance, with a particular contractor you might have or consultant. So you go through that process. Now, you were mentioning a referral to the New South Wales Procurement Board as sort of an ultimate step. Just wondering, Ms Campbell, how many of those do you receive per year?
Not many. I think when I asked that question, it was in the order of, I can find the exact details, but in the order of three to five over the last three or so years.
Okay. So one a year, let's say.
Yep.
And sort of what level of gravity do you need to, to get to that kind of referral?
Well-
Is this sort of non-completion of work or?
Sorry, I thi- I actually have misunderstood your question because I was referring to data around supplier complaints.
Oh, okay. I'm talking about more internal department complaints here.
I'm not aware of complaints that have been escalated up through the board, yeah.
Okay. So in terms of, so I guess these are the potentials, that everybody in the New South Wales Government is very happy with the consultants that they've employed and engaged, which I suspect may not necessarily be the case, or there are grumbling issues that go along. What sort of mechanisms are there so that, for instance, Mr Smith's experience with a consultant can be shared with Mr Manning? That you may have an indication within your own department that might lead you never to go back to that consultant again in terms of engagement? But is that sort of shared with other government departments in, by some mechanism?
It's a very good question and I was discussing this yesterday with my team. I think the example that Mr Manning has given you around what's happening in the construction procurement space is an opportunity to look at how we might do that in the consultancy space. I think historically, there may have been consultant performance reporting at a whole of government level. But again, that relies on individual agencies providing that information centrally so that we can look at it centrally in terms of how we then disseminate insights, lessons, use it to inform decisions around pre-qualification, for example.
Mr Baraghi?
Thanks, Chair. On evidence earlier today, we heard about the different sort of models of oversight. So I imagine there's a lot of situations in the contemporary setting where you have, so government gives a contract to a major supplier to construct a road or a school or a hospital or whatever. And the consulting arm of that same firm is essentially project managing the, the construction. In which case, the question may be raised is, wouldn't it make sense, like the, the example that was used this morning was the old Department of Public Works where you would have public servants, for want of a better word, micromanaging the project or oversighting the product on behalf of the public, the construction, rather than having an outsourced oversight on the ground? Do, does the procurement board, do you guys have a view on that, on those two models?
So Public Works is still performing that function for various delivery agencies across government at the moment. This, Mr Manning and Mr Di Matteo would have examples of that within their agencies and their construction projects. Public Works also still manages the whole of government construction procurement scheme in terms of the GC21 standard contract, training for agencies, as well as in, in a large part, supporting local councils in the region around their procurement and construction management.
So was the, was the historical model that they were all-encompassing? Or, or is it, like, is it what you're saying now, is it a kind of a bit of both? What I was describing is a bit of, bit of a hybrid?
I, look, I, I can't talk to the historical model. I don't know if any of my former-
I mean, because what we've been hearing is, is that the, and I've heard this on the ground, talking to people who were, you know, brought up in the, say, the seventies and eighties, yeah, "Oh, you had this great old public works department who used to go out and inspect things and everything was done properly and it was a great world." And that's kind of the evidence we heard this morning. So I'm just wondering, what is the, like, is it a mix of that oversight, that micromanaging, project management, public servant on the ground and consultancies managing their own construction? Or is it?
So to talk to the education model, we run a model where we employ project directors
Yep.
to, to actually be the client role. So regardless of whether we have a private sector consultant or public works, they report into a project director for school infrastructure, who is the client who makes sure that whoever they are-
So they're employed by the Department of Education?
Yes. So, yes. Yeah, they're engaged for the Department of Education. Their job is to make sure that regardless of who the supplier is or where they come from, be they a consultant, an architect or an engineer or a project manager, be they're a building contractor, they're delivering to the standard that we expect them to. So the, in the, in the kind of older days, if you like, the client entity would be more of an administrative function and Public Works would probably, would play both consultant and client representation. We've actually separated those two. So we would use Public Works, I feel like as a consultant and they compete in the market. But there are some areas where they have a much stronger capability and are useful to us as an agency. So if I, if I look at the Cooler Classrooms Programme that runs across sort of 900 schools, we've engaged Public Works to oversight that on our behalf. But we still have a client role in that space to make sure that we're checking what they're doing and what everybody else is doing is consistent with what we want to do. So the model is, the model is slightly different in part because infrastructure agencies have now got that capability themselves to move away from just an administrative function to a client role where actually the, you know, we're clear about the spec, we're clear about the timeframe and the budget and we're clear that we own the decisions and the outcomes of the project and nobody else, nobody else does. So there's a, it's a mixed model, but in a slightly different way.
So that, the potential for conflict then, in terms of, well, I'm working for Jones, Leng, LaSalle or whoever and I'm going to, I'm going to be the cons, the project manager on the ground. If that, what you're saying is that that potential for conflict should be filtered out at the project manager level who's employed by the Department of Education because they would go, "Well, hang on".
Yeah, we, we, we would never engage the same entity to do the construction work as the, as the oversight of the construction work, so-
Is there anything in government guidelines that mandates that separation?
Probably, but given that it's not great practice, I've not looked to check, but-
No, it's not good practice, which is fine.
Yeah, yeah. So which is, which is why we, which is why we wouldn't do it because you wouldn't get great outcomes. And contractors, building contractors who take the risk on the building side tend not to be in the consultancy space. So that, they tend to be two very different animals. But in all regards, our job as a client is to police them to make sure we get the quality of the outcome that we want because to be fair, my project directors are accountable to principals and a whole range of others who have very clear views about what they think success looks like.
Can I, can I ask a question? Sorry, sorry.
That's okay, go ahead.
It's not exactly related, but, but I note that we have, for example, education and health representatives here and thank you. I, I wondered if, with regards to all of the things we're talking about, particularly in relation to what Peter, my colleague Peter Primrose was raising about reporting, do you have, and of course, the, the idea that we need a central vendor management system, am I to presume that currently, almost, and because of the devolved system, that all, if we were to bring in each government department, that we would have quite a divergence in invoicing systems, reporting, conflict of interest procedures, aside from a general policy that comes down from the procurement board? Is there a huge variety, is that the sense that I'm getting, in practice, across each of these layers of engagement?
I think in practice, the short answer is yes. How agencies operationalise? Now, that's not to say that there are not whole of government initiatives in place around how we do actually have better consistency. And, you know, one example is how we're looking at that in the procurement-to-pay lifecycle across government, you know, which touches on both procurement, but also, you know, the banking and financial services team that sits in Treasury and how we, you know, look at that more on an end-to-end basis and bringing the sector together in terms of consistency in principles. I think the systems do look different within different agencies. Obviously, Ms Young is here with us today who, from DCS, who, you know, own the ICT system. But, you know, I think that's historically some of the challenges in trying to drive that consistent approach across government.
So to take a question that's usually asked by my colleague here, which agency would you hold up as the closest to best practice or the exemplar? There's got to be quite a lot of variation and I suspect, given the looks on your faces, that you might have some ideas about which, which would be better than others.
I, I, look, I think that's a really difficult question to answer. I think there are exemplars across the sector in different parts, like doing different things. You know, working in a central agency, I think, you know, what we're looking for is working with partners in agencies who can take more of that whole of government approach and help drive that consistency across the sector and within those agencies. And that looks different, you know, from department to department.
This is an important point because it did, it did come out in evidence earlier in terms of accounting standards. That was a big point that the previous witness or the ones before them put down in evidence. That is, is that we, we don't, there, there doesn't seem to be a standard template approach to how you enter consultancy services, for example. So you may be getting divergent sources of information depending on how it's entered. And so wouldn't it make sense then for Treasury or someone or finance to put out a standard process and presumably with technology these days, you can guide people down a certain path so that it's difficult to make a mistake depending on what the service is? Because then you're going to get an accurate snapshot of what actually has been spent on consultancy, what's been spent on contracting, all that sort of thing. But at the moment, it sounds like it's very much dependent on how the agency allocates it.
I, I think there's two things. There's one, the work that Ms Vanderwalt was talking about in terms of Treasury guidance to the sector around financial reporting requirements. And I think the other is the work that we discussed when I was at the committee previously in working with the board around some of that definitional work around what is a consultant, what is not a consultant, better examples that we might be able to provide, to be able to provide that guidance to the sector, to your point around, you know, the differences in interpretation that may be being made across the sector and how that expenditure is being classified.
Because we, I mean, in the accounting profession, they have like mandated standards of accounting that cover all this stuff.
Which in my experience are also very open to interpretation.
Sure.
They are. Yes, they are open to interpretation and a high degree of judgment as well. And what we currently report through- Um, and what we currently report through our total state sector accounts um, is under other operating expenses, there's a note, note three, um, that's been the same year on year. That provides more detail, um, on consultancy expenses. But that's only for consultants, um, that are classified under other operating expenses. And I think what you're referring to is, there are cases where consultancy expenditure is capitalised, um, on the balance sheet.
That was one of the examples that was given, yes.
Yes. So what we would need, uh, to do is, again, we'd need to aggregate the data and through our financial, um, reporting framework, provide guidance to the sector to provide us with both recurrent and capital expenditure. And we'll need a system to support us to collect that information and consolidate it.
Can I, um, can I just bring us back to that point on business cases? I just wanna get this very clear. From what I'm hearing, there is, although there are guidelines and there are expectations as to how a business case gets prepared by an external consultant, there is no situation where we go back and assess, you know, years down the track, whether or not the business case was actually correct. Um.
Sorry, I, I can answer that question.
Can I, sorry, can I just finish the bit, cause I, cause this is vitally important when you've got, you know, we had a couple of years ago, there was a disclosure about, um, school infrastructure was spending ten million a year on Deloitte to write business cases for, for small-scale infrastructure projects. We had, just the other week, um, we heard from, uh, New South Wales Ambulance about the four hundred thousand dollars they were spending on Deloitte to do business cases for them. If we're spending all this money on consultants to do business cases that otherwise could be done by government, what are we doing to make sure those business cases are actually robust and worth the money?
Uh, so I talked about, you know, the front-end process. I think the part to your question I didn't answer was what do we do at the back end, um, if the projects haven't delivered, um. Two things, and then I'm happy to, uh, give Miss Vanderwalt an opportunity to respond as well. Uh, certainly in the infrastructure space, the, um, gateway policy and assurance framework requires a final gate, which is around benefits realisation. Uh, I think, you know, we would accept that that is probably not done as routinely as we would like it to be done. Um, so there is an opportunity to be looking at whether benefits have been delivered and if not, why not? And I think to Mister Manning's earlier point, that could be for a whole range of reasons. Um, but there could be root causes around the quality of the inputs, which could be, uh, from consultant input. Um, I think the other thing, and this might be what Miss Vanderwalt wants to talk about, is the sort of outcomes budgeting approach from Treasury where we are looking to and, and I might defer to you, um, Miss Vanderwalt, uh, to explain this better than I might. Um, but making sure there is clear linkage to expenditure and programs and benefits and being able to assess that they've been delivered, um, as part of annual cycles, budget cycles.
Uh, we might need to get some more information for you, but there's another group in Treasury, our Economic, uh, Strategy and, um, Productivity Group that, um, uh, captures all the, um, they've got an evidence bank of all the business case, um, V C Rs. Um, and that is to support, um, evaluations of, of those projects and business cases and a comparison back.
Um, just because we don't have much time left, can I ask you about, just, just a couple of, we've, we've talked about secondments before and the idea of, um, different consultants coming in and, and basically sitting within departments. Um, there was a couple of, um, e-Tender, uh, entries that piqued my interest around Treasury's use of secondes. Um, I'm looking at one from the twenty-second of June this year that was published. Uh, this is for a six-month contract with Deloitte valued at, um, around six hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Uh, secondments to Treasury to support with reviewing the agency's monthly data submissions uh, and providing support to the team over year-end processes. Um, how many people are seconded under that contract and why couldn't they be sourced as employees?
So I can get you the data, um, about the number of people. Um, we're in a unique situation this year where the production of the total state sector accounts overlap with the production of the budget. And that is because of, uh, the elections and, uh, change in government and government deciding to deliver the budget in September. And, um, there are busy periods through the year generally when we produce the, um, financial reports, because this team in Treasury is responsible for producing the monthly financial reports that is published on our website. They're also responsible for producing the total state sector accounts, um, as well as the aggregates, which are the total numbers for the budget process. Um, and so because, um, of the, um, peak in workload, um, this year, uh, we have, uh, relied on some, uh, additional labour hire.
Um, and there was no way that those people could be brought on as employees and then redeployed for the other half of the year to do something else?
Well, that is a model that we are, um, looking at, uh, for going forward, um, and under a steady state. Um, where the budget and total se-sector accounts won't overlap. So in a normal year, our budget would be handed down sort of late June and the sector accounts, um, by October, November, uh, would be the aim. So there's no overlap in.
So you refer to them as labour hire effectively. Would this, just because it's now, we, no one knows what's consultant, what's not, would that be categorised as consulting services in Treasury's accounts or as?
No, so if you go to note three, you will see that that is actually disclosed, um, uh, separately.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, and then we've got another two that look the same but are to two different companies. We've got quarter of million to K P M G and a quarter of million to Deloitte, I believe, um, which talks about, hang on, let me double check whether it's Deloitte. Yeah, it is Deloitte. Um, these were contracts that run from March twenty-three to September twenty-four, so they go for eighteen months. Um, support on accounting and financial advisory services under the A S B. Um, now, there seems to be some sort of accounting policy support. Again, it's half a million dollars for both of these. Is this, are these secondes? Are they, what, what are they?
Sorry, I'm gonna need a little bit more detail on that. What, uh, what was the, um, the date at which that was?
The date that they were published is the eighteenth of April. Um, the contract duration is from the sixth of March twenty-three to the sixth of September twenty-four. Um, it's called accounting policy support. One is with K P M G, one with Deloitte, both for a quarter of million each. Um, saying support on accounting and financial advisory services under the accounting, the Australian Accounting Standards and or government finance statistics, statistics and for highly technical and complex matters. Eighteen months of, you might need to come back to me on that one.
One on notice, yeah, thanks.
Very good, thank you. Um, another one here, three-year agreement to provide actuarial services to New South Wales Treasury, published on thirteenth of February twenty-three. Uh, this one is nine hundred and one thousand, uh, eight hundred and ninety dollars with Mercer Consulting. Um, so this is a three-year agreement to provide actuarial services. Again, is this not core government work? Why are we using consultants and not employees?
So this is a very specific role that Mercer, uh, performs at Treasury and that is to value the defined, uh, benefit superannuation liability.
Okay, and that can't be done, it can't be done internally?
Requirement for that is once a year.
Independent, or is that it be once a year?
Once a year, and then, um, every third year, there's another consultant that provides, uh, another overlay.
Basically judging risk profile when people are gonna pass away in terms of how much you have to pay them, correct?
It's a bit, it's a, it's complex, so it does involve that. It involves, um, escalation, um, yes, the timing of when people will be retiring. Um, it's subject to investment returns, um, what the current escalation rates are.
Okay.
You've got, I mean, to the chairs. I mean, I don't wanna be, I don't wanna sound dismissive, but, I mean, you would have economists and people resident in Treasury, wouldn't you, who would be, I would have thought it doesn't sound like a very complex mathematical.
It's, it is complex.
Give it a go, Mark, sure.
For three hundred thousand dollars a year.
But to that point, is there a requirement for that to be independently verified? That it isn't done in-house? Like in terms of that valuation and assessment? Like valuations are typically something that need to be independently verified. They're not something which you come and cite yourself. Is there that requirement?
Um, look, I'll need to get back to you on that.
Okay, you can take it on us.
It's a later slight requirement for us to do that.
Okay, um, I could go on. I've got a couple of more in relation to the lottery's duty monetisation. Um, we've got one of them here, Ernst and Young, hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, uh, to be an accounting and tax advisor. They, they lep, they leapt out at me as being things that we could perhaps treat as core government work. Um, and the question is, I guess, why we are using so many consultants for this sort of work when, you know, perhaps we could be using it for employees instead?
Um, I think Miss Boyd, uh, in relation to your inquiries around some of the lotteries consultancies, um, so historically, uh, any of those major transactions that have been led out of Treasury have been led with a small team of people with the capability to have oversight of that and to manage advisors. Um, but because they were in the nature of asset sales, um, bringing proceeds to government, the costs of expertise that was needed to support those transactions, um, was funded out of sale proceeds. Um, now that is a model that has applied in Treasury in the past. That is not a model that we are applying currently. Um, and, and there's been a realignment certainly across my commercial team, um, around how we would manage that work, uh, starting from the principles where we are building up teams internally and using advisors. Um, you know, only where we cannot find the capability and expertise, whether it's within Treasury or other parts of the government. Um, and that is the approach that's currently being taken.
Appreciate that. One, one final one. Um, the PATH programme, um, the update of the I T back end, as I understand it, that's not gonna be a, a very, um, eloquent way of describing what that is. But I understand Accenture, Deloitte, a whole bunch of others have been paid hundreds of millions of dollars in relation to this project so far. Is that something that is being, seems to be being given from department to department? I know that when, um, Victor Domenello was, um, the Customer Service Minister, he sort of pushed it on to, to somebody else, I think maybe to D C J, um, because he felt that he could deal with it internally. But is there any update on that programme or any attempt to reduce those consultancy costs? So cheeky one to finish us off.
So in terms of an update on the programme, the programme is a multi-year programme and the first stages went live in April and July this year. There's now some twenty-six thousand public servants across, I'm gonna say about seven different networks of agencies being paid out of the, um, integrated whole government platform. There's been a number of questions here today about how we get better visibility and transparency of information. One of the issues that have existed in the past is that there has been machinery of government changes that have affected the finance systems of all of the agencies, with the exception of the large agencies like health, education and transport, which tend to stay pretty much in the same shape that they are. So the PATH programme is an attempt to bring most of the other agencies on to one consistent finance and H R platform so that reporting becomes easier over time, that administrative changes to the shape of government become easier over time. And so that's why that programme has been instantiated and it's been running for about the past three years. Um, these programmes are large and complex and do take a very long time to deliver, but the first couple of stages have gone live. There's a few more stages to go live to bring the balance of the Departments of Communities and Justice, Departments of Planning, Environment, Department of Regional New South Wales and Aspects of Other Departments on to the platform. Uh, and the current horizon is due to finish in about July next year.
Thank you. That is all we have time for. Um, thank you so much for coming again, um, in some cases, um. And, uh, to the extent that there were questions taken on notice or there are supplementary questions, um, the committee secretary will be in touch. There'll be twenty-one days to answer. Oh, sorry, go ahead, Miss Vanderwalt.
Some answers for you.
Oh, good.
On the, um, the first contract, um, that's providing support to the production of the sector account, we've got seven contractors helping us. Um, and then the other contracts, um, were proactively entered into, again, to provide search capacity. It's for our accounting policy team. And I can confirm that they have not, these contracts are only entered in, uh, in case we need the capacity. And the spend to date has been nil on those two contracts.
Okay, that's interesting. Thank you. Okay, that is it. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much.
All good, excellent. Hello, um, welcome. Uh, I now welcome our first witnesses, sorry, our next witnesses from the Australian Paramedics Association. Um, could I please ask each of you to please state your name and position title, uh, and then swear either the oath or the affirmation?
My name is Gary Wilson. I'm a delegate with the Australian Paramedics Association, New South Wales. Uh, I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you.
My name's Telak Nabi. I'm an organizer with the Australian Paramedic Association. Uh, solemnly, sincerely and truthfully declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. I'm gonna ask you just to bring your microphone slightly closer. That'd be great.
Sorry about that.
No worries at all, thank you. Um, would you like, uh, to start by making an opening statement?
Thank you. Um, we'd like to thank you for the opportunity to appear before the committee. I would also like to acknowledge the support that previous committees have shown our members and the communities that we serve. Uh, I'm a delegate and former secretary of the Australian Paramedics Association, New South Wales, which is an independent apolitical trade union that represents the majority of New South Wales frontline paramedics. I've also had the privilege of serving my community as a full-time paramedic and have done so for over twenty years. While New South Wales Ambulance has the potential to be a world-leading service, it continues to be hampered due to a lack of internal capability and resourcing. While there is always a place for consultants, New South Wales Ambulance seems to have become overly dependent on them as a result of these long-term issues. While the inquiry's terms of reference refer to consulting firms, New South Wales Ambulance also uses other external consultants and partners such as individuals or organisations. These exan, external consultants have and continue to play a major role in influencing significant changes to the structure and operation of our organisation. As such, we believe that they also need to be considered as part of the inquiry rather than just consultancy firms. The major themes that are usually raised when the use of consultants is discussed are transparency, accountability and value for money. Unsurprisingly, these are reflected in the committee's. Unsurprisingly, these are reflected in the committee's terms of reference and are concerns that we share. The themes also closely align with New South Wales Ambulance's own core values of collaboration, openness, respect and empowerment, and have been the cause or factors in numerous industrial disputes and have significant impacts on the welfare of our members and the quality of the service that we provide to our communities. We believe that a lack of transparency, a lack of accountability, a lack of genuine consultation has and will continue to result in poor patient and staff outcomes unless there are systematic changes in the way that consultants are used. Some projects that we know that have been impacted by the use of consultants within New South Wales Ambulance are the statewide enhancement project, seven hundred new paramedics, approximately two thousand and nineteen. SWIFT, which was over eighteen hundred paramedics and thirty stations, which is currently underway. The Paramedic Response Network, which included new ambulance stations and a change of model in Sydney. Frontline Leadership Model, which is currently underway and looks at our frontline leadership and management. And the statewide rostering improvement project, which is currently underway and will undoubtedly lead to some disputes. While much of the previous testimony regarding New South Wales Ambulance's use of consultants relates to internal processes of engaging and managing consultants, our focus is more on their use and the outcomes as it relates to our members in the community. More than happy to answer any questions that you have either today or subsequently.
Thank you very much. I think this is, thank you for coming and for sharing your experiences. And I think this has been, so far, a missing piece in this inquiry is, you know, what it's like to be working in the public sector and at the receiving end of, I guess, decisions that, as you say, have been influenced by consultants of whatever type. Can you tell us a little bit about, I guess, has there ever, have you ever been asked, with all of those projects that you've mentioned, have you ever been asked what you thought about the outcome in terms of something that goes towards reviewing the quality of the work that those consultants did?
The short answer is no. But in more detail, I would say that having been a paramedic for over twenty years, having been at the head of APA for most of the last ten years, there is a genuine lack of accountability for the most of the projects that we undertake or are part of. There's a lack of genuine consultation. There's a lack of genuine abilities to provide input either early in the process or even quite often towards the end of the process, where we're normally getting asked to be involved. To my knowledge, we're still waiting to do evaluations of significant enhancement and roster changes that were part of SWEP back in two thousand and nineteen. We've asked to have that evaluation done and to date, nothing.
I guess in terms of, you know, when we had New South Wales Ambulance before us the other week, the impression I got was that, you know, it's necessary to bring in somebody else who sort of, I guess, sits between the organization and its employees in terms of gathering their feedback. You know, that you needed to have somebody appointed to go and consult and work out what, you know, whatever the next step was for the organization. Is that your impression of the use of consultants? Did you get, for these projects, have you had the opportunity to contribute? Were you asked for your input?
I firmly believe that there is a genuine place for the use of consultants in private and public sector. And where you've got short-term specialized requirements, then consultancy certainly makes a lot of sense. However, if you're talking about seeking feedback and information from your workforce, where you have employee representatives active in the space, I'm uncertain why you would need an external consultant to talk to your own staff or their representatives. Certainly, our organization, since our registration ten years ago, has been actively trying to consult cooperatively and collaboratively to try and fix a number of issues. And our experience with a lot of these consultant-based processes is we don't have the ability or the opportunity to provide genuine consultation or input. We are often involved quite late in the process. We've been given limited opportunities to provide input and even to the point where we don't see draft reports or preliminary conclusions so that we can provide feedback on issues that were never identified during the original discussions.
So they, so, so, because I recall the evidence and I think the evidence was that, because I think I might have asked the question, or one of us did, about the level of consultation. And they maintain that they did talk to you, but what you're saying is, is that why do you need consultants to talk to your staff? Why not have managements talk to them directly to find out what's going on and save a whole lot of money?
Well, as an employer representative union, obviously our preference is that employers talk to us.
Sure.
And certainly within ambulance, there's been a history of staff not feeling safe to speak openly about their views. And we act as a buffer in those situations.
Yeah.
As far as opportunities go, look, I can think of a major project recently where we had a very short informal meeting and were provided with no further opportunities to provide input in a situation.
So is it, is it basically just a tick-a-box approach to consultants?
That would be my view.
And what if, like, presumably if I were the New South Wales Ambulance, I would, my response would be, well, if we talk to you directly, we may not get the full picture because, you know, as a union, you've obviously got an obligation to look after your members, which is wages and conditions. We've got to think of the big picture, service delivery, all the rest of it. What would you say to that?
As an organization, from our inception, our goals have always been the welfare of paramedics and the communities that we serve.
Yep.
We have advocated.
It's the nature of the job, right?
It's, honestly, you don't do this job for the money. There's a lot of people who could make a lot more money in a lot of other areas.
Yeah.
It's not why we choose to do this. And we value our communities. And for many of us, like myself, I live in a small regional town. We do things at our own expense for the sake of our communities. As an organization, that's what our members expect. And so when we advocate, we advocate not only for our members, not just for wages and conditions, but we try to look at the bigger picture. And our view realistically is that the one thing we should be in disagreement with, with the employer, is wages. Everything else, we should be pretty much on the same page because we all want the same thing.
Yeah, yeah. So has, so has the, has the union put the view to management that, look, we work together on this, we can save a whole lot of money because we know how it works on the ground. We know, we know what works for our people. We know what works for the community. Talk to us about how we can both get an outcome and, and let's cut these third parties out because they're costing twenty million or whatever the figure is. Has that conversation been had?
Certainly. And repeatedly over, well, like I said, the decade that we've been a registered union. I think one that sticks in my mind is the Paramedic Response Network. Millions and millions of dollars were spent on changing our operational model in the metropolitan area to hub and spoke, where we built brand-new superstations and we fluidly deployed crews out. And before we spent all of this money, the union quite bluntly said, this isn't going to work. Now, we weren't listened to. The process went ahead. We have lovely new superstations and a significant number of smaller, older ambulance stations were closed. My understanding is to date, all but three of those stations have now had to be reopened because the model failed, as we expected that it would. Now, we'll be very grateful for the brand-new shiny stations and we'd like some more. But certainly, it's frustrating when you are trying to be cooperative and constructive, to be either dismissed, ignored, or, as you said, be part of a tick-a-box exercise rather than a genuine consultation.
So which consultant recommended that program that closed the small, which program was that?
That was the PRN and, let me have a look and see whether I've got. Ah, look, I'm sorry, I'll have to get, take that one on notice. I don't have that readily available.
No worries. We'll see if we can find it.
Can I ask a related question?
Certainly.
Hi, yeah, thank you. You mentioned that, you know, it seems reasonable for very niche areas to use consultants, you know, for particular projects. Are there any projects that you can think of, I'm thinking of the last ten years when you've been intimately involved as a representative, are there any projects that you think absolutely had to be done by consultants? I mean, what's the proportion that you think could have been, of the ones that you've seen could have been in-house and, and those that were legitimately needing that niche expertise?
Certainly. Part of the problem that we've had, and I believe our commissioner acknowledged publicly, which was nice to see, that New South Wales Ambulance has been far too lean for far too long, paraphrasing. And one of the things that that's resulted in is we don't have the relief capacity to take advantage of our own internal resources. One of the biggest resources that we have is our people. And yet we're unable to develop them, to develop internal capability and resilience. It doesn't take very much for us to lose a capability because we don't have that spare capacity. If we had those, then certainly we could have done without a lot of the consultants. There are some, and if we extend the definition not to consulting firms, but to also include individuals and other external organizations that provide specialities. One of the projects that's currently underway is a trial of body worn cameras. This is a piece of work that would certainly benefit from an external stakeholder with specialized knowledge in research, such as a university. It has been a bit of a mixed result. There have been very significant issues with that. Again, it was disappointing. The first trial failed and we had provided plenty of notice that it was going to. The second trial's now underway and a lack of transparency and accountability from the first one, I think will cause significant problems in the viability of the second.
Thank you.
You mentioned, you mentioned just now, but also in your opening statement about, you know, other people who are brought on to do work in the form of consulting or, you know, other types of service provision. And you said in your opening statement that they can influence significant change in an organization. Can you give an example of that?
Currently, there's a report that's been released called the Foot Report. Now, my understanding, again, without detailed knowledge of the business behind the consultant, is that he's largely an individual who's been brought on to look at frontline management model. He's made a number of recommendations, some which were core to the terms of reference, some which appear to be somewhat ancillary. And the, there were issues with the consulting of that. And there is a lot of unhappiness within the ranks about the implementation of some of the recommendations because many staff don't believe, especially managers, don't believe that it will serve our needs. So as an individual, they will potentially change the way that New South Wales Ambulance frontline management operates for the entire state.
Are you aware, in that particular instance, did they, I guess, was there a, you know, a need identified where then that consultant was brought on to fill? Or are you aware of any situations where this work is sort of being pitched by a consultant to the organization and then the organization thinks that's a great idea, let's do that?
We don't have the transparency to know that information. We aren't notified of when New South Wales Ambulance is looking at engaging a consultant. Quite often, we're advised of it or find out through third parties much later in the process, which is problematic. In this instance, the need for frontline management change has been identified for staff for years. Staff have been crying out for a change. We need more support. There was hope. I was speaking to a frontline manager recently and their comment was that when they went to these meetings where the consultant spoke directly to staff, which is, again, not something that we object to, we just want to be included in these conversations, that they were hopeful, you know, that this would be the start of a significant change that we've all been calling for, for years. Unfortunately, what they told me was that whilst the conversation was very positive and they left the meeting feeling very positive about what was the future, once the report was released and the implementation decided, they felt shattered because what they thought was going to be their future turned out not to be the case and that the model that's been proposed on surface evaluation won't meet our needs.
And there was, was a draft of that model circulated? Was there opportunity to comment?
Not to my knowledge.
And was there, I guess, has there ever been a case where the workforce has been involved in selecting a consultant or any, you know, I guess, involvement in that part of the process? Has that ever happened?
Sorry, can I correct my previous, or make an addition? The draft was not, I believe, was circulated within New South Wales Ambulance upper management, but not to stakeholders.
Right.
For clarity. In terms of staff involvement or employee representation involvement, not to my knowledge, no.
In terms of recommendations that we might make from this, from this inquiry, would greater, I guess, workforce involvement in the recruitment of consultants at a management level make sense to be one of those recommendations? Is that the sort of?
It certainly would. And I did give some thought to what sorts of recommendations would be beneficial. And they did include things, such as ensuring transparency with employee representatives is a standard expectation and that this be implemented at a policy level, that we implement a culture of early and active engagement with employee representatives to improve the outcomes and reduce unnecessary future costs. Though, that sort of idea of engaging with staff who are very invested in improving the organization because it benefits them. We have massive problems with our staff well-being. We're in crisis.
I imagine there's a lot of eyebrows raised too when a third party comes in like, like with a banner of an accounting firm or whatever. I mean, this used to happen when I used to work for Ausgrid. You'd see it all the time. You'd think, why are we getting people in to tell us what we know? Like, you've got management who are managing a service to the public. You've got the people who are carrying out the service who live and breathe it. And a third, a third party comes in to tell them.
How to do their, how to do their job.
I don't understand, like, there would be particular situations where there are specialist pieces of work that need to be done with outside expertise. But in the, in your experience, do any of the consultancy engagements satisfy that criteria?
So my understanding is that New South Wales Ambulance put before the committee that they, they had internal resources that would guide and provide information to their external consultants when we were looking at consulting firms such as PWC, Deloitte, ORH. In terms of the individuals that we've been discussing, such as the frontline management rostering reform, whilst the people that are doing the consulting have a background, I believe, in ambulance operations. Mr Foot, I believe, was ex-New South Wales Ambulance, ex-ACT ambulance.
Yep.
One of the problems that we see is that it's such a dynamic space that even if you have people who have a background in those fields but have been away from the front lines for significant periods. And I'm not referring to going and doing a shift here or a shift there. I'm talking week in, week out, working on the coalface.
Yep.
It's very easy for people to lose touch with what the current realities are. And I think that's a, that's a risk that we haven't adequately addressed within New South Wales Ambulance. And one of the ways that we could do that would be for a genuine proactive engagement with the employee representatives. All of our organization's executives are current, full-time frontline paramedics. If our organization doesn't know what's going on the ground, nobody does.
So in addition to, I mean, the obvious. So in addition to, I mean, the obvious, the obvious ways in which failure to consult with the workforce can lead to, um, you know, unnecessary costs, but also, I, I presume, a division, you know, a feeling of a division between workforce and management. Um, can you talk to us about the impact, I guess, on morale, um, and the way that it makes people feel on the ground?
Um, uh, for the last, I suppose, five years, um, I've been saying morale's at an all-time low, we certainly can't get any worse than this, this is the, this is the end of the pendulum swing. And then each year after that, we seem to sink lower. Um, Covid didn't help, um, Covid put a lot of stress on our, on our members, um, we had a lot to deal with. Increasing workloads, um, and the separation between the workforce and upper management, um, hasn't helped. Um, every survey that I can think of um has been consistent with that morale is one of the big problems that we've had and continue to have and will continue to have unless there's some systemic changes. And it's not just about money, although some extra money would be lovely. Um, it's not just about more paramedics. It's about changing our culture and how we treat our paramedics, um, so that they can do their job better. So that they can look after their communities better, um, while maintaining their own wellbeing. And it can be something as simple as how we treat our paramedics with regard to allocating annual leave. Um, we've got services in other jurisdictions where annual leave can be organised forty-eight hours out on a computer with an automatic approval provided certain criteria are met. Um, in New South Wales ambulance, we have to plan our annual leave up to eighteen months in advance. We have to take pre-designated three-week blocks, we have limitations on how we can take annual leave, when we can take annual leave, how we can change it. Um, there's a significant difference between those two positions. And while we may not be able to get all the way to our ideal, um, we can certainly do better than we have. Um, those sorts of things can make a big difference to morale. Um, and if you were going to bring in an external consultant to do anything, it would be to talk to employee representatives and employees to look at how they can improve their wellbeing and the processes that currently frustrate them. Um, some of the changes are very simple, how we fill out a timesheet. Um, we've been asking since two thousand and fourteen for some small changes in our timesheet software. Um, consistently get told no. Um, again, these aren't big things, they aren't major changes, they aren't earth-shattering. But sometimes it's the grain of sand that's in your shoe that is just the irritant that sends you over. Um.
Hmm. It must be incredibly frustrating to be sitting there thinking about the ways in which you could improve the processes in your workplace, only to have it sort of told to you instead by a consultant who's then getting it wrong in your view.
Um, or just to be completely sidetracked from the entire process effectively.
Um, can I ask, are you aware of any, um, consultants being appointed that have then recommended workforce sort of restructure? Has there been, on any of those programmes, has there been anything that's sort of, you know, a recommendation that that we lose paramedics in certain areas or anything? I'm trying to think of programmes that they, they might have thought there'd be a resistance from you on.
Um, there's currently a, a rostering reform underway. Um, again, um, what they're looking at doing is centralising rostering, providing additional resourcing. And we do need additional resources, we need better rostering tools, we need to do better with our rostering. It's one of the bugbears that paramedics face regularly. But what we seem to be doing is further and entrench- further entrenching an archaic centralisation system where we're moving jobs from regional areas into a central Sydney location, um, to do a job that has and can be done from home. Um, at the cost of, you know, Sydney's some of the most expensive real estate in the country. Why are we paying for real estate in Sydney for jobs that can be done elsewhere? We're taking away jobs from regional areas, we're taking away opportunities for pre and postnatal um, alternate duties. We're taking away opportunities for people who are on alternate duties due to workers' compensation. Um, we're taking away career development. And this has all happened in a very short space of time where people have been told, this is our new model, this is what we're going to implement, you can either relocate to a new location or you can relinquish your role.
So hang on, hang on. So, just so we're clear, so we have a programme that is for rostering. So we're talking about, you, you're on at this time, in this place, you're going here. Um, that used to be held by a number of people regionally, that's now being brought into the city in a centralised way. Um, why? Because, because a consultant does.
Be able to tell you.
You're right.
Unfortunately, um, with the lack of transparency and a lack of accountability, I have no answers for you. Um, each area used to look after its own rostering. Um, and we have, again, some of the most capable people in these roles who know the intricacies of their own areas.
So they know the people, they know the areas, they know the services in the area presumably, and, yeah.
And the distances. Um, you know, we've had instances where we've had, um, centralised processes which have said, surely it's okay to send a person from this town to this town because they're in the same area of management. The fact that there's, you know, four hours difference in driving, um, apparently is irrelevant, because they just don't know. And so a lot of managers, especially at the smaller stations, um, who know their staff and know what's going on with them, can manage their rosters to maximise the wellbeing of their staff. And when you know the person who's coordinates all of that in your area and can ring them up and have a conversation with them and go, look, there is actually a reason why I've done these roster changes, then that results in better wellbeing for our staff and reduces the costs of staff absences, overtime, premium labour and all of those things. There's a lot of concern out there that when these things are centralised to a central body with a single set of rules to cover the entire state, what's going to happen is we're going to lose that ability to manage people as individuals rather than as numbers. And that's going to create problems, it's going to reduce our wellbeing, it's going to increase our absenteeism, it's going to increase all of the associated costs. Um, and we don't see why. Certainly, we need more resources, certainly we need better rostering tools. But with modern technology, I don't understand why there's the push to centralise. And it's not just in the rostering. Um, virtually all of New South Wales ambulance projects are run out of head office. To participate in any of those projects, paramedics have to work out of a Sydney location. You have half of the paramedic workforce who doesn't live in Sydney, many of us with alternate skills. Um, I have an engineering background, we have architects, we have trades person, people, we have people with I T skills. Um, we make no use of them as an internal resource because we don't provide them with the opportunity to be developed as an internal resource because we overly centralise with an archaic system.
Are they, sorry, I'm, I'm, I'm getting down this track now, but I'm, I'm curious. Are they getting cheaper people centrally? What, I'm trying to work out how they could possibly be making any kind of cost-saving out of this.
The cost-saving would be, and again, lack of transparency and accountability, we don't know, um, because we've largely not told these things. Um, I would imagine that the cost-saving is that they don't have to pay for travel and accommodation um, or resources to allow them to telecommute. Again, for most projects these days, in your own offices a- and talking to your own constituents, um, a lot of communication these days can happen remotely. We have telephones, we have emails, we have live sharing of documents, we have video conferencing. Um, we don't use any of these things to make use of the resources that we have available in our workforce. Um, and we don't have the resource relief capacity to free them to do it. Um.
This is the, um, I'm just putting the, the two things together now, so this is the statewide rostering improvement project.
Yes.
Um, that P W C is involved in, I understand it.
Uh, that's correct.
Um, interesting, okay. I think we may need to look further into that, um, although perhaps outside um, the strict terms of reference of this inquiry, but I think that sounds, personally, I think it sounds like a crazy, uh, project. Um, I'm just going to check if any of my colleagues had any further questions at this point. Is there any other, anything else that you'd like to say as sort of final comments?
Um, oh, there's so many things that we could say, um, but we'll leave that to the, to the submission, I think. Um, did you want to quickly mention?
Um, there was a question about which consulting firm was used for the superstations, the Paramedic Response Network that Gary was referring to, and it was Operational Research in Health.
Okay.
That was utilised, um, and they were also utilised for the deployment of the one thousand eight hundred odd paramedics that is currently being rolled out.
Great, thank you. Um.
Sorry, um, there was one other item that's in the terms of reference that we haven't discussed at all. Um, and that's where we talk about enforcement actions on contracts. Um, now, again, without the transparency, it's very difficult to provide detailed information on this. Um, anecdotally, ambulance seems to be left holding the bag financially when issues arise out of constructions of ambulance stations, um, fleet, those sorts of things. Um, and I was advised, uh, recently that our air operations have been, which we contract out, um, which I'm sure was done under a consulting process, um, are significantly impacted by pilot absences of up to fifty percent in any given shift. Um, and I believe today we have a twenty percent absence rate, um, which has to have an operational impact. Um, it's a known problem, it's an ongoing problem, but I'm unaware of any effective measures from a contract enforcement process, um, that have been taken.
Interesting. Thank you for that. Um, and you will be putting in a submission as well, is that correct? Yes, yeah, well, we look forward to that as well. Any other questions at this point? No, that concludes. Um, thank you so much for your time today, your information has been really valuable. Um, and thank you, of course, for all of the work that you do for the community as well. Um, to the extent that there were questions taken on notice, um, or supplementary questions, uh, coming to you, there will be twenty-one days, um, to respond, but the committee secretary will be in touch. Uh, so thank you very much, that concludes our hearing for today.
I appreciate it, Tom.